Because it takes about that long to line stuff up to get it on the agenda. I have not heard from any council members that they would like to have it on an agenda. And so I have no schedule to offer you.
Okay, can I ask that the council members review that again? Because I would strongly like to get this this due since order resolved.
They're your council members, you can ask anything you want to.
Can we do that within six weeks?
That doesn't mean they're going to respond because that gets to a policy discussion, but.
Well, I don't know. I mean, you tell me what's realistic.
I would say based on the lack of response from the last invitation, council members, you let me know. I would say they're not interested in looking at this code. Really? Do you have something Levi?
Yeah, I might just offer there is there is another path forward, I guess. If if I might suggest anyone, anyone can submit an application for a specific code change. We have an application online for that. So if there's if there's some specific language that you would like to be amended in the code. You know, there is a fee associated with that, you know, take care of public noticing and those kind of things. But that's another path forward is to submit an application. And if 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 an application submitted, then then it would be processed. But it would be it would be based on a specific proposal of, you know, what you want to change.
So what you're telling me is is to pay the city to approve something that the council members don't even want to look at right now. That don't make sense.
Thank you for the information.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying it's an option. I'm not saying.
I just, I mean, realistically, I think that, you know, six weeks to look at this. I mean, I'd spoke with council member Sweden today on the phone. And she advised me that, hey, you know what, to come again tonight to get it on the docket so that it can be looked at. Because there was a lot of photos taken of the same ordinance that's being broken and nothing's being done about it there. So that's what I'm asking for is six months. Hopefully, we can get it on the docket and get this taken care of.
Justin, could I can I call you this next week and talk more specifically about like exactly which changes you would like to see made?
You know what, I even offered a suggestion in the meeting.
I know, and I'm sorry, I.
And you know what, I mean, I come to the meeting and offer a suggestion and no one's willing to.
I know, I apologize for not following up sooner. Can I call you this next week? Okay, thank you.
And council, as you know, I mean, it's not the only discretization in time that I was pointing out was. If we want this on the next council agenda, three weeks from tonight, I need to hear from you all within the next week. Now, in three weeks, the clock gets reset again, and in three weeks, the clock gets reset again. I'm completely open to anything that 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 the council wants on the agenda. So it's not a do or die. I think Mr. Hobbs probably has a schedule that you're you're interested in. I understand that, but there's no deadline to say, well, if you don't do it in three weeks, we won't do it ever. Right? Anytime you all would like to talk about something, a code change, let me know. It'll just take a couple of weeks to get the staff review and get it on the agenda and and give you a week to look at it before our meeting.
The biggest thing is too, is I mean, the where the where my trailers parked. I mean, in in two months, my trailer is going to be parked back in my backyard on the cement pad that it that I park it on in the summertime. Snowmobile will be over in two months with the snow that we have now. So that's why I would like to see something, you know, done sooner than later. Because there's other people that this code is affecting, but yet no one's, no one's getting getting citations or warnings or anything like that.
Yeah, we.
So and you yourself, Mayor, said that this isn't a moneymaker for you, that every citation that's written or anything, you lose money on it. But it's, I mean.
We we don't enforce ordinance to make money. I promise you that. I'll promise everyone here that we enforce ordinance to try to change behavior to live with one another.
Well, and I think this, you know, the pictures that I submitted and everything else, I mean, it's. I don't, I don't see why it's not something that the council members could could listen to change that.
For us to respond to that, we're into a policy discussion, so we.
That's fine. That's fine.
All right, thanks. Michael, are you just, oh, you are here to speak? Please, Michael Stokes, give us your address, please.
Thirty-three forty South Six Hundred West in Nibley. And I've been doing a little more research and study on history this year than I normally do in American history specifically. And I have been overcome for the last few months with gratitude for what you guys are doing here. I I know how much, well, I don't actually know. I I'm realizing how much I don't know that you sacrifice in time and effort and energy. I know each of you individually, and I'm getting to know each of you more the longer I live in Nibley. You know, Nate and I go back 25 years or something like that. Norm and I are 10 years. Justin, it's I guess more of a job for you in that sense, but we've got 25, 30 years as well. And I I just think about the impacts that you are each having because you're willing to fill this role. And I'm so grateful. I I appreciate that we can all come here and express our feelings. And I'm a big snowmobiler. I don't even know what the situation is, but I've got a pretty good idea of where you're coming from. And I appreciate the fact that we have a council that is willing to listen, that's willing to put in effort, Aaron to volunteer and make a phone call. I just really appreciate it. I want to make that public. I want to say thank you out loud since I'm here tonight anyway. And I wanted to have no other agenda item than to simply say thank you.
That's very kind, Michael. I remind you, we have municipal elections every two years.
My name is Mike Anderson. I went out of town. Oh, the last snowstorm we had, I went out of town, spent time with my family. And I come home to this on my door for snow removal. For an inch of snow. When we get a storm, I'm always on top of clearing my driveway and my neighbor's driveway and the sidewalks. I come home, I'm afraid to go out of town for fear if it storms while I'm out of town. I come home to a, this was just a warning, but to a citation. I think taxpayer money, if we're going to spend money to send somebody around putting this stuff on doors, would be better spent. Paying the guys that maintain the roads, the sewers, the water lines and the parks more money. I think this is a waste of time. And and, you know, I can walk down the sidewalk in the summertime, down eight hundred. And I have to walk out into the road so I don't have to walk through somebody's weeds, but I don't see anything being done about that. And, you know, yeah, this angers me. I appreciate what what you guys do. I appreciate what you do, Mayor. But we need to use our money better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get Mr. Anderson's address? We need your address for the rest, yeah. Thank you. Who else? Go ahead.
My name's Adam Pell, six, six, eight west, thirty-four eighty south. I've lived here for a long time, and I've loved every minute of it. I mean, it's just a great place to raise a family. My family's pretty much grown up. And I'm going to piggyback off from Mr. Anderson there. I I've lived here long enough to know that you're not supposed to park stuff on the street, okay? And I'm not complaining about the parking tickets I've got this month. I have a set of employees that live out of state. They don't know the rules. They don't know. So they just drop trailers and stuff wherever at my house and I'll take care of them. That's they're passing through. All right. And that's not even my main complaint. I'm going to piggyback off of him a little bit. I so I noticed that we, you know, you were stepping up your citations and whatnot, and obviously with three. And, you know, and I come across his citation that he posted. And it got me, it got me angry because we help each other in our neighborhood. I mean, that's just the way it is. And what I think that's getting lost in this whole citation business with. It concerns me that, one, the fine is seventy-five dollars for the first offense, one hundred and fifty for the second and three hundred for the third. And I don't, I don't really care about the money end of it, but I'm, what it really concerns me is from five P M. If there's in a snow event to six A M, I have three hours to clean those sidewalks. And that's how that citation is read, and that's how I interpreted it. Okay? And I want to follow the rules the best I can, but it makes no sense, none to me. And it baffles me that there's no consideration of the elderly. There's no consideration of what's going on in our neighbors' lives. And what, what kind of neighbors I have, they're great. They're amazing people. I have a gentleman two doors down. He cleans the walks for a woman that's possibly going to lose her husband to cancer. Okay, six kids. She doesn't have the time. nor the patience or, or anything for that matter, but he does that every day. Every time it snows, he's out there. I'm the same way. Okay. Um, we take care of our neighbors. We take care of one another, but it would be a slap in the face to get a, get a notice on the door. I work out of town a lot. I'm a heavy civil contractor. I am out of town. There's not enough bridges in this valley to supply me with the work I need to do. So I am not home. And he brings up a great statement. Do I really have to plan my vacations, which I, I take my vacations in the winter time and I go south where it's warm. I take my summer vacation somewhere where it's summer. So I'm not always home. And I don't know, it's a big deal to me to worry to say, okay, well, it's just not me I'm worrying about. I mean, fixed incomes? No, it's not really a great look as a, for me looking from the outside in. And I know this is my first time here. I, I actually had to call a couple of people that's, that's been to these. This is my first time in 25 years. I just live my life pretty simple. Okay. But I do think it's an overreach. And I think, I think, I know that you're trying to get your, your point across to clean your walks. There's a lot of people out there that go above and beyond and for other people that can't do it. And it's kind of shameful in my eyes. I was pretty heated over it the last week. And that was just because of your, your ticket that your wife posted or whoever posted. And I was pissed. I was like, I can't believe I live in a community like this. But it's more of a thug mentality notice. That's how I took it. And I don't live with thugs. I live in a community with people we care about each other. And I don't know how to get that amended or how we can change that, maybe lengthen the time, because I know that different people work shift people. I'm a working guy. So, and going on vacation, I don't, you can check the weather, but I booked mine six months in advance. So we all know how accurate the weather is. So it may come and may go, but it would be a dang shame to continue on that path with the, what that notice was insinuating.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Mayor, there was one that I was asked to read in, if that's all right?
Sure.
So, uh, Carlos Cabal Monte, I think you got his address, Cheryl. He was, he wanted to come but wasn't able to stay for public, uh, comment. So I'll just read his, his words. Um, dear city council members, I'm writing to express concerns about the current snow removal ordinance and its associated fees. I understand the importance of clear sidewalks for safety. The current regulations seem overly strict and financially burdensome. Specifically, I'm concerned about unforeseen circumstances, what happens to residents who are out of town dealing with unexpected work obligations or physically unable to shovel snow within the given timeframe. Weather unpredictability, snowstorms can be unpredictable, making it difficult to always comply with the ordinance, especially for those with early morning commutes. High fees, the escalating fee structure, starting at seventy-five dollars and doubling thereafter, seems excessively punitive. I urge the council to reconsider the following. One, increased flexibility, allow for exceptions in cases of travel illness or other unavoidable circumstances. Two, extended timeframe, provide a more reasonable timeframe for snow removal, considering the unpredictable nature of winter weather. And three, to reduce fees, reevaluate the fee structure to ensure fairness and affordability. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? With that, we'll close the public comment period and move to the planning commission report. Please, Levi.
Yeah. Um, so a couple of things that, that were, uh, discussed, the planning commission are on the agenda tonight. So I'll, I'll cover those when we get to those agenda items. But, uh, for those that aren't, that are not on the agenda, so the Hawk Hollow subdivision, which is at thirty-two hundred south, just south of Heritage Elementary there, um, that, uh, they, they did, the planning commission did approve the preliminary plat for that. It's with, it, it was a conditional approval. Um, if you might recall, this one, uh, is a, there's a proposal to trade, uh, some city land for, for land, um, that, that the proponent owns and dedicate, that's, that's adjacent to the Nibley Meadows Park. And that agreement, uh, was also considered, uh, the, a development agreement slash, uh, land exchange agreement. And that's going to be in front of the council probably for the next, uh, at the next meeting. We, we did have some details to work out, um, on that. The main reason it was even in front of the planning commission, uh, was because there was a provision of Nibley City Code that, um, through the development agreement that, that is being proposed as, as a slight exception to the code. So it did need to go to that portion of the agreement. It needed to be considered by the planning commission, but the land exchange really is a council decision. And we, we just have a little bit more, uh, homework to do with the, the applicant to, you know, to ensure it's a fair trade. And, um, so those two things were considered. And then there was a discussion, um, a workshop on the RM zone, uh, lengthy, you know, lengthy discussion. Uh, there wasn't any real clear direction. Uh, you know, we have this on the agenda again, uh, but, you know, some of the things that were discussed is, is, uh, just some questions about the admin, the administrative process for RM versus legislative for R P U D and, and, and there was, you know, just, they, they really took kind of a thirty thousand foot level view of the ordinance and, and whether, you know, we want, we want to continue with RM the way it is or amend it or, or just kind of double down and push more toward R P U D. Um, and then, you know, there was also kind of a broader discussion that came up about residential, um, zoning options and the availability for various types of densities and housing. So anyway, it was, it, I think it was a zoomed out view that we need to kind of funnel in. And so it, it will be on the agenda again with, with planning commission. Um, you know, something else is we, we are about to kick off our general plan and some of these get into, oh, well, where should we allow more density? And, and we're going to have, I'll link your discussion on that, um, through the general plan process as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Levi. Uh, next, let's move along to resolution twenty-five oh three. This would be a proposal to appoint members to the Nibley City Parks and Rec Committee. Chad, will you introduce that to us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So as, uh, some of you know, we've had some turnover in our Parks and Recreation Committee. We've had two members that have moved out of the community, uh, that is allowed. Um, we're still looking into the details on that, but it, it's created a couple of openings and we're very excited about the applicants, um, that have, uh, put their name in the hat, so to speak, uh, very qualified. Uh, we went through the, the regular process of, um, putting some things out on our website, social media. We accepted applications electronically. I forwarded you the details on that, um, and with staff recommendations. So today, uh, before you, we have Manny Labus. I hope I said that right. If you could stand, please. Um, he has plenty of qualifications to represent arts, uh, specifically performing arts and so many more things. Thank you, Manny. And, uh, we also have with us John Hayden, and he will represent parks, trails and open space. Uh, we've known John Hayden for quite a while. He helps us out with our flag football and lots of other great things. So, uh, thrilled to have them, uh, hopefully as a part of the, uh, Parks and Recreation Committee contributing, uh, to the health and well-being of our community.
Thank you, Chad, and thanks to both of you for being willing to serve on the Parks and Rec Committee. I got to read the notes from your applications and, uh, counsel, I ask, I ask you to confirm my recommendation for these two on the Parks and Rec Committee. I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead, Nathan.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh three and waive second reading.
We have a motion to approve without second reading. Second from Garrett. Discussion, please. Nathan?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, I also read the notes and I was very excited even about the new additions to the Friends Group. I think that, uh, Parks and Rec is in very, very good hands and I'm excited for these two gentlemen to join. So.
Good job.
And do they know they don't have to move out of town if they want to get off the committee?
You can stay here.
Okay.
I've, I've mentioned this before I've been around. I always have to give you all a history lesson because I've been here so long doing this. You think I'd know better? But I, when, when Chad first brought to the council the idea of a Parks and Rec Committee, actually at the time we were struggling to, uh, put people on the planning commission. And I appreciate the service of Planning Commission, Parks, Correct Committee, all of those folks. And I said, Chad, how are you going to staff this? And, you know, uh, thanks to people like the, uh, guys we're looking at tonight, we get it done. Chad gets it done. So again, my appreciation. Any other discussion? Uh, since this is a resolution, Cheryl, we, if, is, is there any objection to proceeding with the vote? Seeing none, Cheryl, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lawerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
In favor.
Councilmember Mansell?
In favor.
Councilmember Sweeten?
She's absent. Yeah. It, okay. I count that four in favor and unopposed. A resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Uh, next, uh, we have a resolution twenty-five oh four, appointing Brett Swenson to the Nibley City Planning Commission. You all know Brett and this may seem like deja vu all over again. Um, Brett is a great asset to the planning commission. He has lots of experience. He's, uh, he's, he's been through this a lot of times. And once a year I have a heart-to-heart discussion with Brett. Will you do another year? And I thought we had it covered with the last resolution that I gave you recommending, uh, other members of the planning commission. But on review, thank you, Talon. It looks like we need to, uh, or you need to let me know if you'll accept my, uh, recommendation to appoint Brett Swenson again to the planning commission. This is for first reading, if you so desire, although the planning commission has a meeting tomorrow night. So nudge, nudge. I'll turn it to you. Garrett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh four, appointing Brett Swenson to the Nibley City Planning Commission and waive second reading.
Motion to approve and waive second reading. Is there a second? Uh, let's go with Aaron. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Is there an opposition to voting? Seeing none? Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lawerson?
In favor.
Member Mann?
In favor.
Councilmember Mansell?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Cheryl. That motion passes four, uh, in favor and unopposed. And our thanks to Brett Swenson as well for his continued service. Uh, it's the night for appointment. So next we have resolution twenty-five oh five. Am I doing this or is somebody else? I guess I'm doing it. So, uh, the cash mosquito abatement district allows us to have an appointed representative and we have been served by.
Gregory Shannon.
Gregory Shannon. Thank you for the, the last year. And he was actually filling a vacancy. And so now he's up for, for reappointment as the resolution shows. I don't think Gregory's here tonight. I don't see him. Okay. Um, so if you have reservations, you'll have to ask me about them or ask, or discuss them yourselves. I recommend to the council that we appoint Gregory Shannon to the cash mosquito abatement district.
I move to approve resolution twenty-five oh five and waive second reading.
Motion to approve twenty-five oh five and waive second reading. A second from Nathan. Thank you very much. Is there opposition to voting? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Cheryl, will you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lawerson?
In favor.
Councilmember Mann?
In favor.
Councilmember Mansell?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, counsel. Resolution passes four in favor and unopposed. Okay, let's get into our first public hearing. This is, uh, public hearing on an ordinance change that would be an amendment to the Nibley City Code. And Justin, I'm going to ask you to give us background information, if you would, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This, uh, ordinance was brought to you at our, during our last meeting and we discussed, uh, the, the reason for them. Happy to go over those again or answer any questions you may have. But the gist of the ordinance is that we've been having some issues with contractors and other, uh, people hooking up to fire hydrants within the city, unmetered and unprotected from backflow devices and things like that. We were expecting that to increase a little bit with some things and changes that Logan City has made with making it, uh, their ability to hook up a little more expensive for them as well. And so we just want to make sure we have an R code, our ability to be able to enforce our ordinance so that we're making sure those things are done properly, uh, with the proper backflow prevention devices and, and things like that. So this code, uh, amends primarily that as well as, uh, we've also had some problems, some issues with landscapers and homeowners that are covering up water meters and making it difficult to access and get into those meters to make sure they're being properly read as well as maintained. And so this code sort of codifies and makes possible some of the, the fee schedule changes that were made a couple of months ago. So with that is all I have and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Stay tuned when we get to discussion. So with that, if there's no objection from the council, I'll open the public hearing. If you would like to address the council on this issue of modifying the, uh, related to water theft and infringement on, uh, city staff access to water. Please, you don't, you don't have to sign up. If you'd like to speak to us on this matter, please come forward. No takers? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and offer to the council, uh, consideration and discussion on this same, uh, ordinance twenty-five oh one. This is our second reading. It would be appropriate to either pass or fail or continue. It's up to you. Nathan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, twenty-five oh one.
Motion to approve twenty-five oh one as presented. And this would be the real deal. Uh, is there a second? Second from Norm. Thank you. Let's talk about it. What do you got? Go ahead, Nathan.
I think it's kind of related and, and just helpful knowledge. Um, have we as a city, right? Water meter vaults are not in the right of way. And so when staff need to get to them, they're essentially entering private property. And this part of the ordinance, I didn't catch where it says specifically like that's, have we ever had like safety issues or, um, problems or anything like that?
So the placement of those meters has changed over the years. Some of them are in the right of way. I'd say the majority of them are in the right of way. There are some for a period of time where they wanted to put them behind the sidewalk. Uh, for, there was, there was a kind of a theory where, one of the other big problems is when they go in driveways and oftentimes developers will put them in long before driveways are ever thought of or planned. So they have to be moved. And by putting them behind the sidewalk, you're able to swing the lateral instead of having to put a joint between the main line and the meter. So there was this period of time where Nibley tried that. It didn't really work out very well. So there's some that are behind the sidewalk and they're always in a utility easement though.
Yeah.
At least the more modern ones, there's some in the older parts of town, Long Hollow Road, whatnot, places like that where, you know, may, there may be a gray area, whether they're in the easement or on private property. So they, they're kind of all over the place. If that, I'm, but I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, it was just kind of a question that was related as I was reading and considering this.
Yeah, currently the standard is for them to go in the park strip.
Yeah, so all new stuff is pretty much always in this park.
Yeah, it's within, between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know how we're going to, uh, enforce that? We've had some public hearings about enforcing or are we going to give warnings right off the bat? Or are we just going to give the, like, just say you gotta?
Yeah, I think it really depends on the situation, what's going on, because really this is intended for those that have been like very negligent, like dropping a three-foot boulder on top of it or putting three feet of fill on top of it, which shockingly enough, we have had happen and have had that issue. So, and it, and it again is to help us cover those costs. If, if we, if we go to a, a situation where it's been uncovered or been covered up and we, we're more than happy to talk to the homeowner and, you know, if they want to take care of the issue and get it uncovered, that's fine. Um, it's, it's more of just kind of cover those really negligent ones.
Cause I was, I was one of them that mine was covered with grass and then city came and cleaned it all out.
Yeah, sometimes that happens. That's pretty normal. You get the grass that grows over them. Uh, you know, you know, sometimes some wood chips go over them, whatever. Like we, we search those and find those with metal detectors. It's really not a big deal in those kinds of situations. But, but there have been some where we have had to spend hours. But, but there have been some where we have had to spend hours locating, finding, uncovering and figuring out what happened and why. And, uh, and this is really to address those issues.
Yeah. So, so on something like, like mine, we'd probably give you a warning, say, hey, take care of it, and then if you come back, we do it, or would I get fined right away?
It depends on what's going, like, we would, we, if, if we know where it is and can find it.
Okay.
If we can see a little bit of it, we're gonna chop the grass off of it and do whatever we need to do to the meter. You probably won't even know.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Nathan?
Yeah, just to, to Norm's point, one of the things I like about the proposed amendments is we give city staff the ability, if an emergency, to remove the obstruction, take care of themselves. But if it's just something that we notice, we, uh, we will notify. But it's, it's, it allows for specificity with how bad it is, right? So it allows for us to say, hey, we need you to fix this by this time. So the, each, each notification of violation sounds like it'll be very specific to the situation, which I like about this amendment.
Garrett?
Yeah, like a lot of the other things, I think a lot of this, I wonder if we shouldn't use the newsletter for education for some of this, because we don't want people caught off guard. I'm not sure most people even know where their water meter cover is. Or, you know, and they really probably should, especially in case of an emergency.
Right.
Cause I mean, that's the whole point of this, right? If it's covered and there's an emergency, you've got a thousand pound boulder sitting on there, and we can't shut the water off, that can create some problems. I understand that part, but I think we've got to do a better job of education first and foremost on that. So that it's not a surprise. Cause I mean, I mean, I don't know how we deal with some of these, because we didn't have code enforcement for a long time, and then people complained we didn't have code enforcement. Now we have code enforcement, and then we get complaints. And I'm not sure how we strike the balance there yet, but we need to find a balance that works.
Yeah, and I think we definitely wear that. We're, we're, we're young, new, and the code enforcement, we're trying to learn, we're trying to understand what that balance is as well. And, uh, you know, we, we definitely are open and willing and more than happy to learn and, and find that proper balance. But you're, you're right. It's, it's difficult.
We just put a big bold thing on the newsletter that says, locate your water meter, know where it is.
We, we have had some discussion about that since the last meeting. Uh, we, we do intend on having Facebook posts, get it in the newsletter, do whatever we can to try to get that education out.
Yeah, so we'll make a note of that, education. Um, I got educated at our last meeting when we discussed this, because I, I mentioned that my water meter cover is underneath until our last meeting about this many leaves. It's just Mother Nature just dumped them there. I've uncovered it, and this is a problem that's worse now that we don't open lids to read the meter.
Right.
Right? And so, public service announcement, know where your water meter is. Um, you should know where all the shut offs in your house are. Gas, water, electricity. And if you don't know where the shut off is for water in your house, you probably don't know where the meter is, because that's an alternative shut off when there's a flood. So, and, and, and so this gives me a chance to pontificate about code enforcement, right? Code enforcement's job is not to write the code. You all know this. Code enforcement's job is to take the code that you all write and enforce it. And if it's bad code, we'll never know if it's bad code if we ignore it. So while it's easy to, uh, blame code enforcement for, uh, alleged infractions of the code, you, you all know what our responsibility is. We need, we need to make good code. Code that will build, uh, would not be onerous, but build happy and healthy neighborhoods. So we know our job. Okay. Anything else? Let's see, we have a motion and a second to approve, and this would be final. Is there opposition to voting on this ordinance change? Seeing none, Cheryl, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lawerson?
In favor.
Councilmember Mann?
In favor.
Councilmember Mansell?
In favor.
Thank you.
I kept that four in favor and not opposed, so the, uh, change to the ordinance passes. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, council. Justin, appreciate you, you and Public Works spending time on that. Uh, moving along, we have ordinance 25 dash 06. This is, uh, to adopt or amend an impact fee, uh, as imposed by Logan City, uh, wastewater treatment. Justin, I think you're going to introduce this. Thank you.
So if you recall, we brought this to you, uh, last, uh, meeting, and since then, I apologize, we learned we, we needed to kind of take it in two steps to make sure we check every box and make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So this is broken, uh, this next two items really are kind of the same, and if that's okay, I'll introduce kind of both now. And, uh, really what it is, is Logan City went through the process of studying the water usage of multifamily units as opposed to single family units. And what they've discovered and found is that, uh, indeed multifamily units produce less wastewater, and so they, uh, done calculations and justified a reduction in the multifamily wastewater treatment impact fee that we essentially, we collect and we turn into Logan. And if you're aware, the rest of all of our other impact fees were, are already set up this way. We did this about a year and a half ago. So this is Logan catching up and making sure that the wastewater impact fees are being charged a, a little bit of reduction, reduction to the multifamily units. And, uh, so this, this first item is really just to adopt the, the plan or the report that was put together by Lewis, LRB Public Finance. They're the ones that, uh, took the data and, and did the calculations to show in the report. And so this first item is about, uh, us adopting that report. And the second item is us adopting the fee, which is seventy-five or seventy percent.
Seventeen hundred dollars?
Yeah, it's, it's seventeen oh three as opposed to twenty-three forty, I believe, for a single family residential, so.
So the, the impact fee, which we'll get to next. I'll wait then. Okay. Uh, with, with that, let's open the public hearing, please. If you would like to address the council about adopting the report, that would eventually perhaps possibly lead to a change in the impact fee that's passed on to us from Logan City, please come forward and address the council. Seeing, seeing no public to, uh, address the council, I'll close the public hearing and offer this to the council. This is, let's see, this is our first reading. I mean, it's about adopting the report. I'll leave it to the council to decide if you want to waive second reading or you find errors that we need to look into before the next meeting on the report. It's yours, council.
I move to approve ordinance 2506 for first reading.
Okay, we have a motion from Norm. Thank you, to approve 2506 for first reading. Is there a second? Nathan, thank you very much. Since this is for first reading, it's appropriate to ask questions, maybe not get into heavy policy discussion, but certainly be ready, uh, ask questions. We'll be ready to have the debate next time.
Yeah, I think a lot to tie in with Logan. If, in case Logan end up changing something we might need to change, just give us a little bit of time, so that's why we're perceiving.
Yeah, where is Logan on this?
They have taken it for a workshop. I believe they, I, I, I think their timeframe is the middle of February, but I could double check on that. And if you would like, we can hold off on bringing this back to you until they're done, done. But I, I think we are just a little bit ahead of them.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Any opposition to voting on this for first reading, seeing none? Those in favor of moving this to the second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Four zero, uh, four in favor, not opposed. And dovetailing with that, I don't know if you have more to say, Justin, or, um, okay, so we have another public hearing. Why don't you mention the specifics again about what class of housing? If we adopt the report and if the report is accurate, what types of housing this would affect? It's an impact fee. It's not an increase in annual, uh, the monthly fee. So, so give us the, the lowdown on what it would actually.
So impact fees are paid when development comes in as to offset the impacts of their development to the system, such as if a line further down, the system needs to be upside because of that development, even though it's off site. Uh, developers aren't necessarily required to go do that, but they are required to help pay for the upsides of that pipe. And so we do impact fee studies, and this impact fee is specific, or at least this item is specific to studying multifamily. And part of the problem comes in when traditionally impact fees have been charged by the meter size. And so a two inch meter is charged a certain amount, a one inch is charged a certain amount, and, and, and so on. Well, from city to city, there's different standards about how many units could go onto a single meter. So in some cases, some cities might allow, you know, ten, fifteen units to go on a two inch meter, while others only allow five or six. And so the amount of money per the impact is disproportionate, and, and in order to try to make it fair across all spectrums in all cities, are just trying to be clear that any multifamily unit which consists of a townhouse, a condo, or, or anything really that's attached to a, a larger group of units would be charged this lower impact fee. And a single family residence would be charged the regular impact fee that's been charged since, uh, what is that now? Three or four years we've been paying that impact fee for the construction of the Logan City wastewater treatment facility. So this, again, this, this impact fee is specific to wastewater treatment.
Did I answer your question? I got rambly there.
No, you're right on. Uh, one question before we go to the public hearing. Do all communities that send wastewater to the Logan City wastewater treatment plant pay the same impact fee in all communities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll open it to the public to receive comment. If you have questions, you can come up and ask questions. We'll try to answer them. Public comment? Thanks for coming out. I'm sure you're here to speak on something else, so that's, that's fine too, or just to listen. I'll close the public hearing and turn it to council, please.
So maybe to clarify your question or statement, so all, all cities pay or collected impact fee, but we could collect a higher impact fee, keep part of it, and then send it to Logan, or is this just a pass through impact fee? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I'm gonna ask Justin, who sits on the wastewater treatment fee committee, to give it a shot.
So this is just a straight through pass fee. We adopt their plan, their, their reports, their studies, and we don't, we, we don't add any money to that. I, I don't know why we would or if we could, to be honest. I would have to look into that. I'm not sure. But, you know, we, it's, it's similar to, impact fees are pretty structured. They're pretty, uh, defined. And so you really want to make sure you're, you're following all those checkboxes and doing those studies and those things you need to do. So, I, I mean, that's a good question. I don't know why we would ever want to charge more, but.
Yeah, I, I know we've never had, but you just said that all communities will collect the same amount. So I know our practice is just to be a passer, keep it, keep the same rates, because like I said, we just, you do studies, you do them, and this is what covers our costs.
Yeah, I probably misspoke. Will you allow me another?
Oh, you're good.
Try? I, I say all communities that send wastewater treatment
Yeah.
to Logan City pay to Logan City the same impact fee.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
I just didn't know if they would charge more to cover some of their impacts on top of those or not.
Yeah, I don't believe that they could, because it's again, specific to the treatment.
Yeah.
And so if, I mean, they're not treating it, so I don't know how they could charge it or how they could charge more. Now, each individual community, as do we, has their own sewer collection impact fee to pay for the pipes to get it there.
So that's a different.
Completely separate. Completely separate report, different calculations, different plans, and it, it is another fee, but it is completely different. And that is up to the municipality.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for clearing that up.
No, I just make sure.
You know, just coincidentally, as part of our, uh, rate that we pay for treatment per thousand gallons, there's a small part of that rate that covers the collection or the pipes from where it leaves Nibley and enters the actual treatment facility, if that makes sense. So there is a little bit of collections that Logan charges us. So I
He knows.
Yeah, and so each city, I believe, also pays the same per thousand gallon rate. Uh, and so it's, it's pretty standardized.
And this one, my understanding is it's already gone to, uh, the city, so it's okay to waive the reading or?
Uh, they're both the same. They're on the same track, the same schedule.
My advice is deal with them both simultaneously.
So I'll give you the motion if that's all right.
Thank you.
I move to approve ordinance 2502 for first reading.
Okay, motion from Norm to approve 2502 for first reading. A second from Aaron. Thank you. Uh, discussion from the council, please. All right, is anyone opposed to voting? Seeing none, those in favor of approving 2502 for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to post? Four in favor, not opposed? Very good. We'll bring this back to you. Thank you. Uh, let's see, let's, we've talked about water wastewater treatment. Let's talk about stormwater for a bit. So, Justin, are you going to introduce 2503? Uh, amending city code on stormwater system operation and maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Oh, not Chad. You are. Okay, go.
Chad couldn't be heard.
Chad gave it to us last time.
Yep, again, this is, uh, the same item that you heard last meeting. What happened is, uh, for Nibley City or any municipality in the state of Utah to have a stormwater collection system and discharge any collected water into a water body for, of waters of the state or waters of the US, they require you to have what's called a municipal separate storm sewer system program. So it's, it often gets abbreviated from, to SWIP to, uh, uh, MS4 is kind of a common one, but it's this program essentially about how to make sure that the water that is getting into the rivers and the streams is not polluted and not causing more problems. And so there's a whole host of things that we have to do about public education. We have to do a lot of inspections. We have to do construction inspections. We have to sweep the streets and just, there's this whole big program that we have to maintain and we have to do to stay compliant with that permit with the federal government so that we can dump our stormwater into the rivers. And what happened was, uh, earlier this year, the state of Utah, uh, has primacy of this, and so even though it's a kind of a EPA federally regulated thing, the state of Utah is in charge of mandating, or is mandated to oversee it. So they have a stormwater arm of, uh, the, the, the Division of Water Quality that actually comes up and does inspections. They do what's called an audit, and they look at the whole program, and they make sure that you're checking all your boxes and doing all the things that you were supposed to do. And we, you know, we had a little, a little bit of a list. We, we did well on that audit, but we did have some things that needed to be corrected and fixed. And one of those really was this code and these ordinance changes and just, and, and really kind of just definitions. And they just want to, excuse me, be very specific about what they see in code. And so these, these code amendments are, uh, uh, just those definitions. Uh, not a lot of real substance or not a lot of change expected in how we do anything. It's just, uh, technical code.
Yep, and Chad gave a great briefing. We appreciate that update. Uh, are there questions for Justin before we open the public hearing? Seeing not, I'll ask the public hearing to be open, invite the public to come and talk to us about stormwater. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. This would be for second reading if, if, if you would like it to be.
I motion to approve ordinance 2503.
Motion to approve from Norm on 2503, amending the stormwater changes that have been, uh, marked and provided to you. Is there a second from Garrett? Thank you. Discussion, please.
I, I know for myself with the stormwater, you get on your bill and then at times you think, man, why am I paying for stormwater that when I don't have a pond or anything else. Um, and it wasn't until I got on the city and you see the complexity and what it is, and that you're paying it for as a whole. Sometimes you might need access to it. Sometimes you don't. Um, sometimes it is tough to see why, why I'm, I'm paying for that. But, um, yeah, if without it, I mean.
Do, do you mind if I respond? Because I, I, I think that we all pay for a utility. This is now a utility, right? It's a service that Nibley City provides to its residents they can't easily provide to themselves.
Yeah.
It's because you have a rooftop and because you have a driveway, and it's because you have, we, we all have roads that we drive on. So even if the stormwater isn't collected on my property or on property next to me. So even if the stormwater isn't collected on my property or on property next to me, my activity in this city because of hardscaping now makes it a service the city needs to provide to handle and deal with that stormwater because I have put hardscaping and drive on hardscaping that the city, the city maintains. Does that make sense?
And to piggyback on that is when you do a subdivision or something, then you have to have a stormwater plan, how you're going to retain it all on your property, if it goes somewhere else, how you're going to tie it into different canals to get it to flow, flow down, ask reviewed and maintain once the city takes over.
Yeah, be careful about flowing into canals because that's a whole nother argument that we have with canal. Well, okay, I just, yeah. How are we going to deal with that water?
And maintain, and where we have such a high water table.
Yeah. And you guys did a great job. I mean, you drug me along. Thank you. To, I mean, stormwater and groundwater become intermixed when groundwater is pumped into stormwater basins and the ponds are full when it's not raining, right? So um, we've done work on groundwater in association with stormwater and, and you know, Nathan especially thinks, I've said it before, I'll say it again. Thanks for dragging me into that discussion.
Great. It's painful for me, but.
It was painful for a minute. Any other comments on, on this ordinance change, proposed ordinance change? Is there opposition to voting? Seeing none. Uh, since this is for final approval. Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
What is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lawerson.
In favor.
Councilmember Mann.
In favor.
Councilmember Mansell.
In favor.
Or in favor, none opposed, ordinance passes. Okay, well, we're, I promised you it would be.
Thank you.
Would be somewhere by 10 o'clock now.
Gosh, we can almost.
Alan Joel, I promised Norm we'd be somewhere. We're not there yet, but I promised we'd be somewhere by 10 o'clock. And things might slow down a little bit because we've got, we've got some new things uh, on the agenda now related to parking and required parking spaces and so on. So Levi, take, take appropriate time to introduce this before the public hearing and don't let me rush.
All right. Well, I don't, I don't want to slow down the momentum, but I will. I'll give you the details of what's being.
So next is ordinance 2504, uh, parking requirements and amendments, minimum parking spaces with new development, bicycle parking and so on.
Yeah. So this, this ordinance uh, was, was heard by the planning commission and there was a public hearing held. There weren't, there weren't any um, comments of, at the public hearing, but just, just so you know that, that was held. Uh, so, so yeah, the, the planning commission worked on this for a number of meetings, number of months uh, to bring this in front of you. There's a lot of time and effort, um, in particular. And I'm going to mention a little bit, you know, Commissioner Ribeiro, I just, I just want to kind of shout out to him. He, he put a lot of uh, extra, you know, in addition to staff time that went into this and research, he'd put a lot of extra research into what, what's in front of you today. So just a background, why this is being considered, uh, you know, the city has existing standards for a minimum number of spaces uh, with new development, whether it's residential, commercial. And you know, this, these are often based on the square footage with residential. It's the number of dwelling units and number, number of beds. And you know, just in reviewing this ordinance, we, we noticed, we, you know, planning commission staff noticed that the current standards are, are outdated and in a lot of cases seem to be overly restrictive. And when, you know, when parking requirements are overly restrictive, meaning, meaning we're requiring more parking than is really necessary, um, then, then it does have impacts on affordability. Um, you know, just in general, parking does, does impact the affordability of, of any kind of development and the feasibility of it and, and really the ability for it, you know, an attractive design for the development. And so, you know, we uh, with the planning commission went through this to try to right-size the parking requirements, uh, you know, with the best information that is available. And I'll go through kind of all, all the changes. Uh, well, first I'm going to go through the, kind of the process. So you know, this, first, this uh, this issue, you know, was brought up with, at the planning commission level. And you know, we're trying to make as much as possible data-driven decisions here. We don't want metrics to be just completely arbitrary, uh, you know, but at the end of the day, it is a policy decision and there, and there's no, there's really no one size fits all for, for parking requirements. It, it depends, you know, how, uh, it depends on the city's goals on how you want to tackle this. So, but kind of to start the process, staff did do some research on, on some available data. And the Institute of Traffic Engineers, they do have a parking generation manual. And within this parking generation manual, primarily what is presented is a, a bunch of data on uh, parking for different types of development. And you, you can look at average rates, um, but uh, what staff provided a chart initially was based on the 85th percentile parking rate. So meaning 85% of the time, there's going, you know, that, that's what the parking rate is, that or, that rate or lower. Um, so you know, maybe 15% of the time, there's a little bit more, uh, but. And, and this would really, this first, again, first draft, this isn't, this is just some background information because this was amended. Um, uh, and, and this was presented to the planning commission and it was observed that um, just based on some kind of local data and, and, and what's being provided, that in a lot of, a lot of cases, these metrics uh, appeared to be excessive. And, and really, you know, not getting at the whole goal of, of what the planning commission and staff set out to do on, on many of these parking requirements. So Commissioner Ribeiro, he, he did do some additional research. And I should mention, I, I guess it's not on the PowerPoint here, but in addition to this research with, with the IT parking generation manual, staff also did research on uh, existing parking ordinances through, really throughout the state of Utah. And um, actually talent helped out a lot with this research on, on surveying different, different cities just to get a feel for, you know, where, where we are in comparison to different cities. And that's where we really found that there, I would, I would confidently say there's not really a best practice, best practice for parking um, ordinances. It really just depends on what the city's goals are. And that, and that's what we kind of found out there. However, um, just trying to contrast that uh, research with the research that Commissioner Ribeiro did. He, he looked at uh, and, and his detail, it's, it's in the agenda item report. He looked at a number of case studies of cities of similar size, not necessarily in Utah, but um, in kind of colder weather climates, because you know, um, that there, there's some impacts there, but smaller cities that have recently updated their parking standards and in most cases reduced them. So they, they looked at them and they, they saw, you know, really kind of going through a similar exercise that we're going through right now. And, and there was, and those numbers were uh, reviewed by the planning commission and, and they recommended uh, that though, you know, with a few, um, with a few exceptions, looking at, looking at some specific uses that those, those be uh, recommended for adoption. And that's primarily what's in front of you today as far as the metrics go. There are some other parts of the ordinance that I'll go into as well that, that are being recommended for, for changes and, and you know, that, that reflect what's on this agenda item, the, the description. And, and these are right here. So uh, in, in addition to changing the metrics, it also allows for an alternative provision of parking based upon a credible parking study. So I guess this is being a little more humble with our ordinance, knowing that we don't know everything. We don't, uh, there may be better data out there than what we could come up with in our ordinance. It's really meant to be a baseline, but let's say, uh, you know, a developer comes in, they say, you know what? This, this is, this is overly restrictive. I don't need this much parking or a business owner. If they, if they do a parking study, this would be, um, this would be a review by the city and, and they could receive a reduction based upon the parking study. Another, you know, pretty significant change with this ordinance is to only require uh, specific parking with new construction, uh, not, and, and this would remove the requirement for meeting the minimum required requirements with the change of use. So this is primarily in, you know, commercial or industrial context where there's an existing building and a business wants to locate there. But maybe they, they can't do it because there's not enough parking. In a lot of cases, there, there probably isn't enough parking on the site. So the trade-off is there could be some spillover parking, but I guess it's, it's really the, the purpose of this change is promotion of economic development and understanding that the business owner going into, you know, an existing building has done their homework and will, and, and will uh, you know, locate in a place that has adequate parking for their business. That it's, it's really just recognizing that uh, it's difficult to change construction of buildings. And, and if we want to promote, you know, businesses flourish in Nibley and for some reason, you know, we have this metric that's allowing them not to be able to locate there and they have to go elsewhere. We're really trying to avoid that. The next provision in the ordinance is bike parking standards. And I guess the next item on the agenda, the active transportation plan, I'll go into more detail on the plan, but there are within uh, the recommended uh, active transportation plan, some, some metrics for bike parking as well, provision of bike parking. And so those, those are included. Uh, so this is the existing chart, you know, that's in our ordinance. As you can see, there's, there's different metrics and uh, it's uh, for example, hospitals, convalesced home, nursing home, one space per two beds. And anyway, you, you can go kind of down the chart there that I won't go through each, each and every one of them. But just to kind of compare that one with uh, the recommended chart here, it is, it is expanded into more categories. And just for the colors, the kind of the tan color that you see there, that, that just denotes that there's really no significant change from what was, what's in the current ordinance. Blue just means that it's, it's a different metric, uh, not necessarily more or less, but just um, we're, we're using, you know, maybe before we used number of employees and, and now we're using square footage, just it as administrative. We do have some times in our ordinance where it's based on the number of employees. And that's, in, in my mind, has, has been pretty problematic. Uh, it, we don't know how many employees are going to locate in a building, uh, when, especially when it initially comes in to be built. Sometimes, you know, they have no clue what businesses are going to locate in there. And so based on square footage is, is uh, it's more measurable. And, and, and so you can see there that the different ones and, and I'll, I'll say kind of this approach is really just to provide a safety net to make sure that there's uh, in, in most instances, adequate parking. Does it, it doesn't mean there's always going to be adequate parking, no. But the trade-off is that we don't think there's going to be too much excessive parking, which is, we feel like in, in a lot of places in the ordinance now, that that, that's the case. And it, you know, kind of gets in the way of feasibility of, of these, of these, you know, different types of development and, and, and businesses to, to locate here. I already kind of mentioned this alternative parking plan, you know, it does, it does need to be uh, based on, you know, credible, credible data. And it will be reviewed by the city engineer who would then recommend a parking requirement to whoever the approval authority is for the development. Bike parking, uh, the, these, these were, you know, largely extracted from the draft, draft act, active transportation plan and provided those recommendations. And then, you know, in general, the about one fifth to one tenth the requirement of number of vehicle stalls. And uh, there's, there's just some minor standards here on, on what type of rack and that they need to be within 100 feet of the entrance. They're not required for all uses, but a number of the uses do require bike parking.
So what would be a couple of examples of uses, just like commercial properties or, or?
Yeah, I.
Residential.
Let me, let me bring it up. I, I'd have, I'd have to double check here. Um, I, yeah, I mean, it did, yeah, different. Mostly, mostly commercial uses. I don't think, I don't think it is for residential, if, if I remember, right? Yeah.
Yeah, institutional.
Yeah, institutional.
Institutional, commercial uses, um, mostly if they're public, if they're public facing, right? I think, I think it's different if it's like a warehouse, for example. I don't think it requires it, but. So, so yeah, it is planning commission's recommendation to, to approve this ordinance.
People have to ride their bikes while they're getting their cars fixed.
I went charging stations for my car to stall.
Bike?
Yeah.
I rode my bike to your shop, Norm, just saying. You're so awesome.
I burnt, I, I took the emissions on the way home that you saved by coming there. Thank you.
Levi, keep going.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Um, so as you noted, uh, the public hearing for state code was held at the planning commission. I think you said you didn't get any comments. Um, is it the planning commission's recommendation or the planner's recommendation that we also schedule a public hearing at city council, which we don't have to do? But.
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
If anyone here feels like they would like to have a chance to address the council. Of course, you always have the opportunity to converse with your elected uh, council members outside of a public setting, but if you feel like you would like to speak to the specific changes of this parking ordinance, let me know and you need to let me know soon because it takes us about 14 days to schedule a public hearing and get adequate notice out. So uh, let me know if you would like a chance to speak to this proposed parking, these proposed parking changes in a public, public setting. Okay. Thank you.
And I can bring up the specific ordinance if you have any questions or anything, but that's.
Right. You, you have access, as does the public, to exact changes in the ordinance. And I'm going to turn it to council, sorry.
And, and, and there's, there's really no rush here if, you know, as far as first reading, second reading, uh, you know, staff doesn't necessarily recommend to pass it tonight, but um, but the recommendation from planning commission and staff is approval.
Thank you. I'll turn it to council. Garrett?
So, so Levi, in the chart, you know, when we have this uh, the bike parking and stuff, what did we use to decide which uses got bike parking requirements?
You know, it really was based on the, on the active transportation plan. I, I think there's some logic there. If it's public facing, if, if they're using, um, you know, if, if it's a type of use where you want bike parking available out front, you know, if, if you have a house, obviously that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense for residential, but.
Well, there was just a couple on there. I saw that I was like nursing home and assisted living. I'm like, who rides a bike to that?
People that visit, not people that live there, but people that visit might ride a bike to go there. Nathan, are you one of those that might?
Potentially.
Twice in my life.
Someone that works there.
I guess that's true.
Yeah. Are there other specifics that you wanted to?
I just wondered how we came up with the bike one because we hadn't seen that before and that's just an additional requirement. And so if we're going to put that on, am I wanting? And so if we're gonna put that on, am I wanting, kind of, like you said, we want to have some data backing it as to why we did this.
Yeah, no, we, we did lean on our, our consultant on that one quite a bit for the active transportation plan and just on, on their background and expertise and looking at, I, I think, I think it's just based on, um, best practice, what other cities, not, not just what other cities have done, but what they've recommended to other, other cities based on the, you know, best available data, data.
Okay.
And to that, does it have much of a footprint or is it mainly just getting a bike rack?
So the only, the only standard is it needs to have two points of contact. So there's, there's, uh.
That's the bike rack?
Yeah, to, to count. So there's a lot of different designs that could be, yeah, it could be a bike rack for sure.
But for square footage on the ground, it just has to have something you can mount your bike to.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But two points of contact, so, you know, a pole doesn't count. I guess two poles, uh, that are connected could.
Counsel, it's your, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion if that's all right.
Please.
Yeah, make a motion to approve ordinance 2504 for first reading.
A motion from Nathan for approval on first reading. Um, is there a second? Second from Aaron, thank you.
Can I have a question as well?
Yeah, no, it is, now is the time for discussion for sure.
So for something like the middle school that's being built over next to Heritage Elementary, will part, parking, these new parking requirements, will that school fall under these new parking requirements or will they be grandfathered under old parking requirements? Or do they not need to, I don't mean, how does that work?
So, so public schools, they, we don't, we, we don't regulate, think land use, um, just, we, we really just regulate utilities, things that are in the public right of way. Everything's under, the, the state doesn't allow cities for, for public schools. So really that, it would be for like a private school. It may apply to charter schools. But that is a good point. There's some limits to really what we can regulate with schools, including parking.
Yeah.
Since the school district receives their mandate from the state board of education that trumps Nibley City's ability to regulate them.
Right, okay.
Right.
We could ask them. We say, hey, here's, here's our requirements. It'd be nice if you met them.
Well, let's say, here's our suggestion.
Yeah, right. Here's our suggestions.
If you were a private school, we would be requiring this.
Right.
But that's a great question, right? Get kids maybe to use active transportation to get to school. How is Nibley City, uh, sorry, Nibley Elementary, by the way, they have bike racks. Aaron, you go there.
Uh, my kids don't go there anymore, but I've been there and the bike racks are always overflowing.
Overwhelmed.
Yeah.
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 So that's a great question.
Yeah.
Okay. Nathan?
I just want to echo the praise of Commissioner Rabau. Uh, I've been kind of following and watching and a little bit chatting with him and the effort that him and then the planning commission did was, was pretty good. And I, I, I appreciate it. Um, the idea of making and creating more value and wealth of every single property in the city, I think, is a big thing with parking. Like if you can make parking reasonable and not parking for parking sake. You know, we talked about stormwater today. We've talked about parking on streets and those kind of things. I think that, that this is a step towards creating more value and wealth for every property in the city, whether it's residential or commercial. So I like it. That being said, I think there was some discussion, Levi, if you could talk a little bit about, um, if it was ever entertained of maximum parking limits? Or was that kind of, I know it was kind of brought up, but I don't, I don't think it got debated heavily or we kind of gave up and wanted to start with minimum or?
Yeah, uh, it was brought up, but it, it wasn't discussed at length.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it was, the, it was in the initial presentation to the planning commission of, here's a, here's various approaches we can take to parking. And that was one of the approaches. And no, nobody suggested, oh yeah, we should do this.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I, as you, some, some of you may know, I recently attended a Providence city council meeting. So one thing I think for us to look at and think about is, while I was there, I stayed and, and saw, um, they are having issues in some areas that relate to a lot of stuff we talked about today that they're enforcing, um, similar to us, no parking on the streets during certain times of the year, during certain times of the day, when it snows, et cetera. Uh, which is why I'm glad he did like Minnesota and some of his, and that's because it's similar. But in their commercial area, they have roads that the employees are parking on the road so that the clients of the businesses in that area get the parking spaces. So then the employees are the ones being cited and, and kind of causing problems with that. And, um, it's, it's in a commercial area, but it's, it's creating, um, an issue where they're trying to get the time of that citation changed and some of these kind of things. And so one thing for us to think about is, you know, with the use cases, which ones will have employees that are likely to drive versus maybe try alternative methods? Um, that's why I like some of the ways that we measure it is based upon, um, employees in some cases, but very hard in others. You never know when your busiest times will be all the time in the winter. But they're having some issues in Providence with, with some of this. Uh, so as we think about it, the location and, and what's available on the street during the summer for a certain type of business may not have as much demand in the winter or may have more than, than they need the street and it's, it's not there. So good master planning of streets and where we want our commercial, you know, it's all tied into what we're doing with the general plan. So this is something to think about that I've seen in a couple of other cities that are features, because we're in a unique spot, right? The other thing that I kind of wanted to bring up was access to the right of ways. So we do have to push snow as a city in the streets. But these businesses or other areas have to push snow in their parking lots. And that usually will end up reducing parking lots during the winter. Uh, some have to haul it out. And I think that's what this business was doing because they just didn't have enough. But, um, consideration or if there was thought about the parking strip, the parking lots having access still to like the right of way to like share that space of snow. Just design factors, that's just something that I was trying to think of, like, to help with that problem. Like, I don't have solutions or thoughts today, but if there's been creative ways of like making sure the snow gets out of the way for both the city and the, the landowner. Um, and then the definition of, of the bike parking, I know this was kind of talked to in commission, but the idea of alternate methods that aren't bikes, right? So can I lock my one wheel? Or can I lock my, whatever device is next for, for us to have that, um, is not necessarily a bike. Because the definition talks about bike parking having the ability to put a U-bolt through both the frame and a tire. Well, not everything has a frame and a tire, but the ability to like lock up a skateboard. And some of these other kind of alternate methods. I think I'd like to see maybe more of that definition included in bicycle parking. Because I don't think everyone's going to ride bikes, but they may ride other alternative methods. And that may be brought up in the active transportation plan, but that was just the other thought that I had as I, I read through.
Yeah.
So those are your thoughts for second, before second reading.
Okay. Yeah, the term they're using instead of bicycle, uh, a lot of times is micro mobility. So we could call it micro mobility parking. I'm not sure, uh, what, how that would change on the standard. I'd have to look at that. Um, yeah, snow, the snow and parking lot issue, that was definitely not discussed at planning commission. Uh, I do think indirectly that landscaping requirements could help. I mean, if you've got a little space to push that snow to, potentially, but indirectly, you know, I don't know.
No, I'm, I'm glad we're looking at this. A lot of times you don't realize how important parking is until either you don't have any or what. I, I have a, a lot next to my Smithfield store and I was putting in a restaurant pad in there and they required 25 parking stalls for the 2,000 square foot building. I was going to do a bigger building, but to get the stalls, it changes the sign of it. And it was mainly directly designed or going to be designed for uh, drive-throughs. But whereas my Logan store, I have 80 parking stalls and it's not near enough. It just depends on the use. So.
I've been there.
I know. Yeah. But as, as we read, at least that's what I think is the, the type of use, what you're applying for would be there. But, um, I'm glad we're looking at it.
So related to that, I think one of the great things that it seems like the, um, planning commission got to was when it comes to commercial parking, the commercial landowner might know more than we know. And so there's a shift from Nibley City regulation to saying the commercial landowner knows that lack of parking will impact their business plan. And so in the two cases you mentioned, right, it might be that your Logan store impacts your business because you don't have enough parking.
Absolutely, yeah.
And maybe that's not a Logan City problem. Maybe that's a landowner problem. And on the other hand, in Smithfield, you know, too much parking is impacting your business plan. And so therefore maybe the commercial landowner understands this parking on the commercial space more than Smithfield City understands it. So I thought that was a good discussion at the planning commission to say, yeah, you know, uh, we had something similar when we talked to the potential, uh, commercial developer because commercial is all new to us anyway, um, on the west side of 2,600 South, you know, and he came back with, yeah, I think you guys are requiring a little bit too much. It was just a little bit, but a little bit too much parking for what my client might need. And he didn't push back hard, but that was the feedback that I got from, and you were in that discussion too. Uh, feedback I got from, from that potential developer. So great examples of cities maybe should, you know, it'd be nice if the city could just design the solution for commercial clients.
Be a lot easier. That's why you're the mayor.
Except you don't like the city designing that solution in Smithfield, right?
No.
So.
Yeah. It's, it's, and that's what's interesting. You don't, you don't know how well something's written or not written until it's implemented. And then once it's implemented, like, oh, that was good or, oh, we missed the mark. So, yeah.
Good point. I think the planning commission did, and Troy especially, did some fantastic research on this, right? Uh, because we're not the first city to deal with parking.
No, but I'd say we're, we're very forward thinking for the size of city we are. So.
That's thanks to you guys, if it's true. And staff. Okay, anything else, uh, on first reading with this? With that, is there an objection to voting? Seeing none, uh, those in favor of passing new parking regulations for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes for in favor and not opposed. Um, take a short break?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, oh, there is an opposition to taking a short break. Nathan, go ahead.
I, I am willing for a short break if, Mayor, you define an exact time that we will be back at this and starting our meeting on that clock.
Okay, I, what I will do then is ask general consent for a four and a half minute recess, which means we'll be back here when the big hand is on the one.
Thank you.
Seeing no opposition, we'll make it so. And so with that, I'm calling this meeting back to order. And we are going to continue with a public hearing, Resolution twenty-five oh-two that would adopt the Nibley City, our first-ever active transportation plan. With that, Levi, I invite you to introduce us to this.
Yeah, so this is exciting. This is the first active transportation plan for Nibley City being presented to you. The first of its kind, you know, the city does have a Trailmaster Plan that was most recently adopted in 2016 as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was not updated through the process of, you know, the Parks and Recreation Plan that was recently adopted, Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan. But so this active transportation plan does stand as an update to that Trailmaster Plan, but it's more broad than just trails. It's on-street facilities for active transportation users. It's policies and programs for active transportation. I'll go through that in here, but really the purpose is to create a safe, connected, and convenient network for walking and cycling throughout the community. I just wanted to acknowledge the Steering Committee, who's up on the screen there, you know, in addition to some city staff, Mayor Jacobson, Councilmember Mann, and then from the Planning Commission, Claire Schenk and Troy Rebeau, Kendall Welker, and Becca Hunt from the Parks and Rec Committee. Matt McNeil was a resident that was involved on this committee. And the consultant who prepared this was Alta Planning and Design. So just briefly, just the different elements that are included in the plan. So there's goals and objectives, which really focus on safety first and foremost, but as well as community accessibility, connectivity, and guiding future development. There was a plan review done of existing relevant plans, you know, to just to coordinate things between different plans. The, you know, Transportation Master Plan or General Plan, those kinds of things. There's an existing conditions analysis that really provided a baseline of, you know, what's on the ground, what the conditions are there. So looking at things like the sidewalk network, different gaps in our trail network, the difference, you know, looking at safety issues, different opportunities, and characteristics of different intersections and corridors. And there was a public outreach component to the plan. There were a number of different community surveys, and I'll go through those ones. You know, there was one specific to this plan, but there were a couple of other ones that kind of fed into that the data, you know, was looked at for the plan as well. And part of the community survey for this was a web map, and I'll go over the results of that. There was also a bike-walk audit held. This is, and I'll, again, I'll go over a little more about that. And as part of Heritage Days, there was Bike Night Out, which we did do some engagement with participants of Bike Night Out to get their feedback about, you know, issues with active transportation. And then, you know, based on the existing conditions, the public outreach, recommended active transportation network was developed. And different policy and program recommendations and implementation plan. So the vision, the overall vision, and this was in a workshop with that Steering Committee to come up with this language is to create a vibrant, inclusive community in Nibley where all residents, regardless of age or ability, can safely and comfortably roll, walk, and cycle to their local destinations by prioritizing a well-planned and connected active transportation network. So just going over a little bit of existing conditions, there are approximately eight-and-a-half miles of paved paths, bike lanes, and natural surface trails around in Nibley City, and those are looked at. There's seven more miles of facilities that are planned for, but as far as what's actually on the ground by eight-and-a-half miles there, you know, looking at the different destinations. So things like schools and job centers there on the left, trying to connect to these destinations, and then just looking at land use and supportive land uses. The, you know, that's just reflective of our future land use map. The existing sidewalk network was looked at, which, you know, in general, the majority of our sidewalk network is complete. There's that incomplete just means that there's sidewalk on one side of the road, not the other. And then, you know, twenty-two percent missing, which, you know, some of that is in kind of undeveloped areas. And then, you know, roads like Hollow Road where sidewalks aren't, you know, aren't existent. So that was looked at, kind of talked about these key destinations, parks, schools, place of worship, employment centers, you know, Nibley City, we don't have a lot of commercial development. So, you know, as far as connections, the parks, schools, churches, these become important destinations. You know, we do have some major employers that are also important to connect to. And then these corridors, so thirty-two hundred south, twenty-six hundred, twelve hundred, one thousand west, these are important key corridors, partly because they're the roads that can get you somewhere if you're an active transportation user, you know. Again, this is an active transportation plan, meaning it's meant to connect people to, you know, from point A to point B. And so providing facilities on these roads that actually, you know, can get you from one neighborhood to the next, and maybe even connect you to another city, are important to provide those facilities. A lot of questions on the survey. I'm not going to go through all the results, but, you know, there were three hundred and fourteen survey respondents. One thing that came out of it, majority of participants prefer more separation. You know, many are not comfortable with the existing network and prefer using low-stress facilities. So there's a fair number of people in the community that are interested in in using active transportation more, but they're concerned with the, you know, in some locations at least, with safety, whether it's crossing the road or just riding, you know, if it's on a bike, riding along the road or walking. This question, what improvements can make walking, biking, Nibley City more comfortable? The top one is more designated bike and pedestrian facilities, and then, you know, followed by better crosswalks, intersection improvements, improved street lighting. And then after that, increased enforcement and education campaigns. I will say, I'm sure there was, with this survey, as there normally is, there's some self-selection bias, meaning the, those, it appears that those taking the survey may be, you know, more interested in biking and walking than, you know, maybe the community at large. But so two-thirds of respondents walk or bike for recreation at least a couple of times a week. So we can't necessarily say that these three hundred and fourteen survey respondents are are reflective of the entire community, but it's a big, it's a good sample of people in the community that are interested in, you know, improving conditions. I mentioned the web map. That was part of the survey. There were one hundred and forty-six individual responses. There, a lot of those dealt with walking and biking barriers along arterial roadways. So, you know, thirty-two hundred south, highway one sixty-five, there's a few on there. You know, that was a big thing. And then also, something that came out of that is the public suggesting more cross-city routes. So, you know, being able to get all the way across the city. Also, as part of the, you know, public engagement, the well-being survey was going, we actually coordinated the survey with the well-being survey. It was going on at the same time, and we wanted to be complimentary with it. And so we didn't ask the same questions, but we knew, we did want to ask some different questions. And so, and we also, at the end of the well-being survey, they put a link on there for the active transportation survey. But they were, you know, as part of the well-being survey, there were questions related to active transportation. So some of those, you know, that came out of the three hundred and nineteen responses, seventy-one percent listed enhanced safety as an important or very important feature in the community, and then sixty-six percent listed improved walkability and more trails as important or very important transportation developments in Nibley. So two-thirds of respondents, which is, you know, significant. We recently, it was about a year ago, we did a survey in coordination with Nibley Elementary and Health Department. We did a survey on Nibley Elementary, and at the time, you know, this was part of our walk action plan for our Walkability Virtual Academy that we did. And we focused at first on Nibley Elementary. It's what they call an all-walk school. It doesn't have school buses. So theoretically, everyone can, you know, kids can walk to school. Of the hundred and three that responded in the survey, fifty-eight percent indicated that the students are driven, forty-two percent bike-walk or get there some other way. One, you know, interesting thing, about a third of them listed other adults, trusted adult to travel with as a way to encourage their child to use active transportation. So I just want to note, you know, that it's important to have the facilities there, but there's other things, there's other barriers that maybe the city doesn't have control over, but we can coordinate with the school, for example, to, for things so that, you know, kids can feel safe, whether it's, you know, walking with, you know, setting up like, we discussed, and I don't know if it got much traction, but like a walking school bus where, you know, there's an adult that kind of meets with the children, and then they walk to school together. So there, you know, there's some other things you could do like that. So this is the recommended network. A lot of lines on the screen there. But I'll just point out some things, you know, the different facilities, really, we're talking about everything from a separated bike lane, and that's like twelve hundred west. And where there's an actual physical barrier between, whether it's a curb or, you know, the Jersey Barrier between the bike lane and lanes of traffic. This is, and this plan is only recommended on twelve hundred west. It's one of those facilities that's difficult to do if there's driveways. So that's one reason why it's only recommended on twelve hundred west. Thirty-two hundred south is a buffered bike lane, you know, long-term, where there is traffic. You want a little bit of additional buffer there from, you know, with the speed, the speeds of traffic and the volume of traffic. But with all the driveways on thirty-two hundred, it'd be difficult to do a separated bike lane. Neighborhood byways, this is where it's, there's really the prioritization is for active transportation users. So it's really convenient for bikers and walkers to use, but it's more of a shared space with vehicles. So that's where traffic calming becomes important along these ways so that, so that, you know, you feel comfortable, whether, you know, whatever your device you're using, that you're in close proximity to traffic. Paved paths, you know, these are the kind of the ten-foot-wide typically paved trail. And then, you know, crossing improvements like a beacon or a signal to, so pedestrians can cross safely. And then other different types of intersection improvements are also recommended in the plan here. I'm going to read through every one of these one by one, so you know. This is a list of, you know, this is really just the list of what you see on the map. But the cost, there's a cost associated with that. As well as, you know, the thing I like about this plan, it includes this implementation. So this is really guiding the city of, should we wait for development for this facility to be built? Or is it something, you know, that we should think about doing as a capital project? And a lot of that's based on whether it's in an area that is built out or is expected to, you know, develop. What we didn't do in the plan that, you know, really would be another exercise would be prioritizing these projects. We didn't get that far. It wasn't included in the scope of work. But, you know, that's something, you know, as we prioritize, and really, these projects with other projects the city's trying to do, that's something we can look at. Now, the consultant did provide kind of a methodology we could use for prioritization. We feel like our staff could, you know, assist with that to get these prioritized. But the plan in front of you really just lists out all of the recommended projects. Also included in this plan, traffic calming and sidewalk improvements. In most cases, it's not specific about where to put specific traffic calming devices, but it does provide guidance, you know, depending on what type of roadway, the types of traffic calming that's appropriate. So if, for example, if it's a local road, it may be more appropriate to do more vertical deflection, meaning something like a speed hump. But if it's a collector or an arterial roadway, that would, it would make more sense to do more of a horizontal deflection. So things like curb cuts and amenable curbs, we like those, things of that nature. So just providing some guidance of what type of traffic calming to use on different locations, and then, you know, just some recommendations to focus improvements on specific roadways and near elementary schools. Some of the policy and program recommendations, so Transportation Master Plan alignment. So within the plan, there are some, for example, recommended cross-sections, but those those still need to be changed within our Transportation Master Plan. So going through that process, and we're likely to go through that process potentially next year to align this plan with an updated Transportation Master Plan. Looking at addressing parking in bike lanes, that was one of the things that came up in our in our bike and walk audit is, you know, when someone's parked in the bike lane and you have to swerve out into traffic, that could be an issue. So whether we need to change our ordinance to be more clear about not allowing bike parking, whether it's through enforcement, somehow addressing that, implementing a traffic calming program. And there's actually some recommendations for, you know, specific ways that the public can provide recommendations on locations for traffic calming and kind of the process we go through to prioritize traffic calming in different locations in the city. Adopt bike parking requirements, that really was, you know, addressed in that last agenda item. Adopt street connectivity standards. This is something that has been on our list to get to for various reasons, but it's really important for active transportation. Without good street connectivity, it becomes very cumbersome, difficult, unsafe to walk or bike to various locations. So, and then update paved path standards. You know, one thing they noted is, like in parks, as much as in parks, as much as possible to get additional width, not just the five feet width that, uh, if, if you want to accommodate different types of users, really five feet isn't, isn't adequate on those paved paths. And then promote, uh, education programs. So Planning Commission's recommendation is approval of this resolution to adopt the active transportation plan. You know, like the last item, it's, uh, there's not a huge rush here to do this by a specific date, so first, second reading, that's up to you, but that's it.
Thank you, Levi. Questions for Levi from the council before we go to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing to receive comment on Nibley's first ever active transportation plan. Seeing no public comment, uh, I will close the public hearing and turn this over to the council, please. Nathan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2502 for first reading tonight.
There's a motion to approve for first reading. Is there a second? Second from Aaron, thank you. Discussion? Nathan?
So I love this, very exciting. I think a lot of these things we knew, but it's nice to know maybe how to prioritize them now. One thing I, I didn't really see addressed that I think is one of the major problems with active transportation being more active in Nibley is weather. I think it was identified that weather was a problem, but I didn't really see like recommendations of how we as a city in this plan can overcome some of that, right? If it's certain types of facilities, like covered bike or warming bus stops, I don't know, right? I don't know what that is, but I just didn't see a lot of attempting to overcome weather. Was that part of the discussion much or?
Well, bike parking specifically, there was, there was a recommendation of, um, if possible, covered bike parking. The planning commission actually recommended to take that out because, not, just because in some instances they felt it wasn't appropriate or it wasn't practical. And if we just say, oh, it'd be nice if you did that, maybe, maybe we don't even put it in the ordinance. That was kind of, that was kind of what was discussed, that it's, it's not very enforceable. Other than, you know, I, I don't know if there's, I don't believe there's anything in here on like clearing snow, uh, but I know that has been a, a, a big priority in the city. I mean, I, I feel like our public works staff does better than pretty much anywhere I've ever been on clearing sidewalks, on, on primary routes and, and trails where we have them. So, um, I don't know if it's a big problem that was identified in the city.
Right.
But, but, um, and you know, I mean, as far as it being cold, I, yeah, we didn't get into bus stops. Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious if they had.
It's an insightful comment. And we did have some discussion on that. Like, I forget if we talked about it here, also talked about it in the steering committee, but the, one of, if not the best cities for bicycle commuting is Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Yep.
And they have weather there and.
It's way colder than it is here sometimes.
And a lot more snow sometimes. And, and, and that is, I mean, the city has made a dedicated, uh, through, um, prioritizing public works activities. They plow bike paths and commuter bike paths before they plow commuter road paths. So city can have a, Steve, I'm glad you're here, can have an influence. I, I know that 12th West with COG funding, um, and the bike path there, the buffered, not buffered, the isolated, separated bike path. I mean, it is a condition of receiving COG funding as we promised to keep it clear, the, the active transportation components to keep those clear. So we're, we're doing a good job on that. We have, we have, your point is well taken. We have long stretches of sidewalk next to agricultural uses that city takes an active role of plowing sidewalks, even if they're not on, on our property, but you make a great point.
To that, on my tenure on the CBTD or now the Connect Bus, um, when the county raised the sales tax, part of the fund went to them and they strongly counseled them to use some of the funds for bus stops, for warming ones. I'm not sure how much left after their.
Are you talking about the fifth quarter, most recent or?
This was the one of.
Before the most recent?
Six years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. But, yeah, cause they, they pushed it and that was part of it, cause they end up getting a good chunk of that. And they, in order to push it, they strongly suggested like areas. So if there's build outs or stuff, we should go to them and say, hey, we want a warming hut for our bus passengers waiting. And that's what they strongly suggested.
Yeah. So, uh, good work, Levi. Um, I'm, I liked his plan. I'm excited about this plan. I think it's a great guiding document for us moving forward. I think that, uh, parking in bikes, bike lanes does need to be cleared up in ordinance. I mean, you all have heard how lax we are with enforcing parking ordinance. So here I am saying, uh, we ought to look at that in ordinance, but it, it, it really does defeat the purpose of a bike lane when there's a car parked. I'll wait for that discussion when we get to the ordinance thing. But the bike doesn't know what to do, right? Do I swerve out into traffic? Do I stop? What do I do? And, uh, again, we'll wait for that when we get to ordinance. I encourage us to take this plan and implement it in ordinance. My only other comment was page 20, uh, under connectivity or network. It's in the right-hand column. I know that we're a town of heathens, but we don't have to put it in the plan by saying there's only two religious meeting houses in our jurisdiction.
I thought we had that fixed.
I think it's still in there as there's only two places to go to church in Nibley. It's on page 20 on the right.
I, I remember they had that in there and I thought.
That was true at one place, many years ago.
So we can, you know, if, if council doesn't mind letting staff just clean that up before we get to the second reading.
That's an easy fix.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a.
Aaron, please.
Yeah, on page 60, uh, so I, I guess, I think I brought this up in one of our steering committee meetings, but I just have a question about on the right-hand column, traffic calming program. And this is a suggested program wherein residents can submit like an application or suggestions for traffic calming measures, if I understand? So is the suggestion from the, uh, consultant, thank you, I'm sorry. Is the suggestion from the consultant that, so this is something that we codify, that like this is our process, is a formal process or like an informal process? Like this is done on a yearly basis? This is done only one time or, I don't know. Did you, do you have any more understanding about that?
I think this one, it, it could be implemented a, a number of different ways. I think this is, this is a, an exa, I mean, like it says there, that's an example process. It's just that there's some kind of formal way that the city, you know, what, whether through citizen input or through review of our streets has a way to prioritize, uh, traffic calming improvements. So this, what they have on the screen, I don't know, maybe that's a little bit more sophisticated than what we really need for Nibley. But I think the, the purpose there is just to say that it, it's advised to have some kind of a formal process or program to, um, for, for traffic calming. You know, I think, I think we've, we've, uh, kind of already, we've run into that, right? When, when we've had issues with, uh, we've had residents along 8th West and 10th West that have raised concerns. And that's, I think, you know, it's important for the city to hear those concerns and, and, and take it into consideration. But it, like everything else, it's, it's balanced against all the other needs in, in the city. And, you know, where is the most appropriate place for that? Is there some kind of scoring, screening? How do we, how do we prioritize those, those improvements? So that they go in the places that are needed most first.
Thank you, Lev, uh, Levi, thank you, Aaron. And if there's something that we should do, you know, we'd like Levi to do to be a little more specific about that before second reading, you know? Certainly let's reach out to Levi and ask for that. It's, um, I appreciate your reference to the consultant. At this point, it's our plan and so we can do, it, it was a recommendation with steering committee, which I appreciate your efforts on as well and with consultant, but at this point, it's the council's plan to do with as we wish. Any other thoughts or comments? Don't see any. So if there's no objection to proceeding to vote to pass this on first reading and bring it back for second reading, we'll do so. Seeing no objection, those in favor of adopting this for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or in favor, not opposed. Great, great work. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a, uh, Resolution 2506. This would be to amend the Nibley City Transportation Master Plan, which would specifically remove 2500 South between 12th West and 1300 West. Uh, we've talked about this a number of times before, in fact, in 2024. The 2025 numbering is 2506. And Levi, are you going to inter, reintroduce this to the council? Thank you.
Yeah. And, and the, I guess, because it's been a while since this has been, uh, discussed, I, I was going to provide a lot of the same information that was, that was given before, uh, but with, with a number of updates that have, that have happened since then. So the applicant, Al Bingham submitted an application to remove 2500 South connection between 1200 West and 1300 West from the transportation master plan. The, they intend to develop a portion of the property with, with townhomes and, and there's a concept plan provided with the application, which I'll go over there, they're, they're going, they're now going through the preliminary plat, um, application process. And there's, there's some updates to the design there that, um, kind of weigh, weigh into this. And so on the application justification for requests is they're proposing to change the general ma, transportation master plan to create, create a safer transportation through a residential area. So just on the map, uh, this is where you kind of see it in relation to the other, uh, master plan streets and, and existing streets in, in Nibley. Uh, so that, that red kind of vertical line, that's 1200 West and then, and then 2500 South is, you know, circled there on, on the screen. 2600 is, is, uh, well, now really should be a solid line, but since the, the last plan, that, that was a master plan road, is, is that, uh, red line to the south, which arterial street. So this is, this is a master plan local street. So that's just showing it, you know, if, if it were removed from the master plan. So this is what was submitted with the original application, which shows this configuration with, with, uh, a proposed, uh, church on, on the site that, uh, which by the way, they, they did submit a, a concept plan review for, um, a while ago. We went through the process or we, we started the process, but, but there were, you know, different issues related to this and we, we submitted comments to them. And I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't gone further in the process, this specifically the church, but a lot of it relates to the subdivision and, and such, but this is what was submitted. And so what, with what was originally submitted, and I'll, I'll show you kind of how this has changed. They, they showed that, you know, uh, this, the road, uh, wouldn't connect through, there'd be this kind of dead end street here. Um, so if you look kind of north of where that, that, that church is located, um, just to get into some updates for the meeting today. So as you might recall, the city council, um, originally directed, after, after the first reading of this item, directed staff to perform a cursory review of the preliminary plat application for Nelson Farms subdivision. So they had submitted, uh, their, their initial application for preliminary plat. And, and so, you know, staff, staff did a cursory level review, uh, not, not really a, you know, full review of it, but there were, based upon that review, there were nine items that were identified and, uh, the, the city counts, the city council motion that, you know, those nine items be addressed prior to this coming back on the agenda. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at today. So this was what was in the first submittal for the preliminary plat. Uh, this is what is in the most recent, uh, submittal. So a, as you can see, you know, some, some changes here is they've, they have expanded the area, so kind of going back here, uh, to an area, uh, to the west, which is currently zoned commercial. So they do have a, a rezone application, which is pending, that'll be on the next planning commission agenda. But, but, uh, you know, they did, they did take out that dead end road and, and reconfigured some other things. They, you know, spread out the, uh, townhomes and I'll, I'll get into kind of how, how the different comments have been addressed. Uh, so it wasn't, uh, there was some conflict of what was submitted on, on the ownership of the open space. And they, the applicant has clarified that the, the, the area north of that, the church area, um, is that they are intending to, you know, wanting to dedicate this open space to the city. This would be subject to, you know, further review and ultimately city council approval if, if the city wanted to take on this, you know, this open space as a park. Uh, but, but that, that was clarified. Residential density, uh, it, in the previous application, it, it was exceeded. The applicant has, has explained that this item's been resolved. Uh, it appears there are some inconsistencies on the preliminary plat that, you know, that suggests that the residential density is, is still exceeded, you know, not, not by as much, but, but the, by about six units. And by the way, we're, we're, we're just wrapping up comments on, on that, on that, uh, this iteration. So we haven't yet delivered them to the applicant, uh, but we should within the next couple of days do that. And then there's also this expanded project area, which, which includes a commercially zoned area. And, and I mentioned they applied for rezone. So, you know, this, I guess this one, a little, little nuance as far as if, if it's been fully addressed, but, but, um, you know, there has been some attention to it. Building orientation, uh, this, this was really, in the previous version, it violated some design standards related to building entrances and private drives. Uh, but, you know, according to staff's interpretation, this, the amended design resolves that issue. Couple of other things, the building code definition, uh, some of the housing didn't meet the building code definition for a townhome, uh, but, but the amended design, uh, changes that. So, so they, they really are all townhomes according to the, the definition. This was just to draw attention that they would need additional, um, and, you know, fire sprinklers, for example, if, if they went with that previous design. The, the roadway cross-section has been amended and, you know, as far as we can tell, this isn't, this isn't really a, a major issue right now. Uh, the guest parking, uh, was inadequate in the previous plan. The guest parking was inadequate in the previous plan, but it looks like this has been resolved. The guest parking lot. Must be privately owned. They they did clarify that 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 guest parking would be private HOA owned. And that was particularly particularly adjacent to that. The park space that that they're proposing. This proposed subdivision goes beyond subdivided Lot Three. So we need to determine infrastructure improvements required beyond Lot Three. And the applicant explained this issue would be resolved at a later time. Went a little bit more detail there, but. And then timing of Heritage Drive improvements need to be clarified. The preliminary plat labels. Heritage Drive are previously it it labeled it as future road by others. Development requires two accesses, and 2500 South would meet second access requirement. So and the applicant responded that the timing of Heritage Drive depends depends on the timing of commercial residential development. Really, this item needs further clarification. You know, the the subdivision boundary of what they've submitted doesn't include Heritage Drive. It it goes to the edge of Heritage Drive. And so, you know, we feel staff that that needs to be, that that still needs to be worked out, the timing of it. You know, it's it's understood that it it could come in at a different time, but but the. Or it could come in with commercial development, but but it needs to be clear that at this point in time, we have a, you know, residential development proposed. And so to have, at least to to meet that requirement for second access, Heritage Drive would be required, particularly if 2500 South isn't, you know, isn't provided. Because right now, there would, that would just be two, one access into the development. Something else that, you know, our our city engineer, who's not able to be here tonight, wanted to point out. In reviewing the traffic impact study. The, they do show level of service F for that south residential access. So really, kind of that 1300 West. Potentially, now, we don't, we don't know exactly, because this analysis hasn't been done. But potentially, a connection, 2500 South connection could mitigate those those traffic issues that are caused. At least, you know, according to the the traffic modeling they did, would would have been during the evening peak hour. It would have that level of service F, you know, which is really substandard for what the city would require. But again, that's that's. Because that analysis hasn't hasn't been done, we can't say definitively that that it, what it would do. But it's, it could potentially mitigate that that issue. Kind of going back to the original staff recommendation, you know, on this item and and the planning commission's findings. So, you know, 2500 South, just kind of zooming out on on the transportation master plan and and the context and the area, the zoning on the property, the RM zone. It it does, if if provided, does improve street connectivity in the area. The RM zone, when you look at the purpose of the RM zone, it does, it does emphasize connectivity to support development and integrate with surrounding area. And when you look at that current block length between 2600 South and Nibley Park Avenue, it's about 1600 feet. So that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty long block without a street connection. And so not not really great street connectivity along that that stretch, you know, at least on the west side of the road. So it would, it would improve that street connectivity as well as, you know, which which helps disperse traffic, provides direct connection for all street users, improves emergency access, and supports effective street maintenance. The road configuration, the concept plan provides little little public benefit beyond the private development. You know, so so that that's something to consider. And then the 2500 South provides more opportunities for driveway connections off 1200 West, Artorial Road. So with, you know, kind of looking back at the the concept they've provided. Particularly when we look at that church property. With a 2500 South connection, that just provides more opportunities to provide ingress and egress in a safe location on at an intersection, you know, rather than mid-block for for that, a driveway to to the church or whether it's a church or or something else, you know, that locates there. Just just provides a a better location to to get that off of an Artorial Road like 1200 West. So planning commission's recommendation, just to remind you, was was to denial for this resolution. With the findings noted below. So 2500 South improves street connectivity in the area, which would help disperse traffic, provide direct connections for all street users, improve emergency access, and support effective street maintenance. The second one, I've. I I would recommend to to remove this, just simply, it's a dead end roadway to create safety concerns for fire access, simply because the the updated preliminary plat removes that that dead end road. So really, it's not not applicable anymore with that. The next is without 2500 South connection, the road configuration provides only private benefit for the development. And then for elimination, 2500 South may force less ideal driveway connections. That's it.
Thank you, Levi. Al, would you like to address the council? As the proponent?
I also want to recognize, this is an important issue for a family. You guys always see Joel and I. Are the four member families of the Western Nelson Farms here tonight. We have the laters right here. Doctor later, doctor later, and doctor later. So obviously, you know, Joel and Ron, Jed from Uncle Ed's family, myself and and Wes from the Merle Nelson family. This is an important issue, and we appreciate you going in to consider this. I think several of the points that Levi went over and said they were concerns. Online, we have two, we have Trent Williams from Men's Engineering. We have Scotty DuClos from Hail Engineering, who did all the traffic study. And he'll go through some of the questions that were just brought up right now. And then Stuart Thang. So the only thing I'm going to say real quick and turn over to Trent is. The church in building that steak center has advocated to us, they came up, you saw them when they were here, the last council meeting, they did not want the road there behind the church because it isolated the road. And Scotty, you will talk a little bit more about that. Stuart's going to talk about the commercial, how it impacts detrimentally to the commercial center and how it creates less options. Now, Stuart's more experienced on that, he'll go through that. Trent and Scotty will talk about some of these these fail ratings that were brought up in there. But I want to bring up in one note in here, and I sent this information from Scotty from Hail's Engineering. The proposed 2500 South connection would provide another point of access to development, but in an area where minimal traffic is anticipated. The connection would also isolate the proposed church building on the southeast corner of the property. And we've talked about that, no one wants to isolate a property, especially a church building. And he continues, increased connectivity can be a good thing, as Levi alleviated. If it alleviates a congested intersection. However, this particular proposed connection is not anticipated to relieve congestion. It would primarily be used by vehicles coming from the residential area of the development and traveling to the north on 1200 West or to the east on 2500 South or 2600 South, which is a very small volume of projected traffic volumes. Without the connection, both the access to 2600 South and the 2600 South 1200 West intersection are already anticipated to operate at a level service A. The USA 89 intersection is anticipated to have poor LOS, are not impacted by the proposed connection of 2500 South, and they will continue to operate at a poor LOS without separate mitigated measures. So I want to just turn over to Trent first and then come back to Scotty. So Trent, you there?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Keep talking, we need to make some adjustments.
Okay. I'm in not the quietest place, so I'm hoping you guys can can start hearing me all right and have a good, good conversation. Let me know when you get things adjusted well enough that you can hear me. And in the meantime, I'll just sit here and ramble while I get the nod. Go ahead and interrupt me when you're there. Can you hear me now? We'll go with the Verizon commercial.
We're we're trying to fix the audio.
Can you hear me now?
Never done this before. What is that? Let me try the. I swear the audio is on that. Yeah, I might just have to go with your idea, Justin, I don't. We'll try that. You want to say something, Trent? See if we can hear you a little better.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Sorry, we're just having trouble with the audio. Yeah, I don't know why it's not working. I mean, it's. Try one more time.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Doesn't seem to be projecting at all through that, is it?
Can you speak into that microphone and see if it works?
Yeah, yeah. It's weird. Sorry. Save my system. Let's try this. And Trent?
Yeah, are you guys getting the settings right there?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Trent.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for letting me be here, even though remotely. So appreciate the comments have been made and and what Al Al started off with. So I just want to kind of walk through a couple of our our reasonings for for wanting to remove the road and and kind of rebuttals there. This is a refresher. So one of the main points that the the city staff has brought up is connectivity. And as as the traffic letter says, a traffic engineer, you know, the most of the traffic, the minimal that would go through there, you know, would be connecting directly to the commercial. You know, and and what we don't want to do is having increased volume traffic on a a local road, like a residential, particularly through a townhome that has, you know, higher density than a single family, more more driveways and drive accesses that they're crossing there. You know, and this is particularly important to note, because you have the the newly built 2600 South roundabout right there, which which is a high flow scenario. It's a roundabout without a stop sign, right? And so so traffic passes through there pretty quickly. Second to that is, if you guys remember the first time we met and discussed about this, we pulled up and zoomed out in the overall map of the city there. And so you've got 2600 South, you've got Heritage Drive, and you've got the, and I apologize, I don't remember the the name of the road to the north there, but what, 2400 South or whatever that might be just north there. You've got all these collector roads that surround all these developments and the commercial properties. Those are the roads that are intended and built and designed to pass traffic through, to collect them and move them to a commercial center, like what's what's proposed to be built on the west end here. You know, the the local roads for residential, the low volume locals are never intended to pass through commercial or or pass through traffic. And and the city in its own design, building the roundabout, has has reflected that standard in traffic design there. Finally, a couple of other thoughts are, you know, when we look at a development and access to it, fire is always one of the biggest concerns. And so having two points of ingress and egress in case one access was restricted, you know, there's a second way out there. And and yes, fair to Levi's point, this last point, you, we, we are still working out contractually how Heritage Drive gets built. And if it needs to be included as part of the residential, we can certainly do that. The hope is that we can leave that as part of the commercial as they get going, so they have control of their access options there. But if it does need to be completed, complete the residential so that that we have our two accesses for. So we meet fire code for the number of units off of a single access. You know, that's that's something we can certainly add to our plans rather quickly or anticipating that. But we've we've held that a little bit in reserve so that we can work with the commercials as they start their design. You know, and 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 then just the last thing is, as you look at this new and improved layout, we've worked extensively with with many of you on on city council to to make sure that you guys understand the intent, the design, and actually have a voice in there. And and so, you know, I hope that's reflected, and you guys can see that in there. I'm happy to take any questions at this time, but that's that's kind of, you know, the presentation that we'd like to reiterate as to why this this road's not needed.
Thank you, Trent. I think we'll keep moving along with the proponent. Trent, if you'll stay in line and answer questions if they come up from the council, we'd appreciate it.
You're really quiet, Scotty. I don't know if you're.
Can you guys hear me?
Barely.
Speak loud. We we were okay with Trent, so we should be okay with you if I can get close to your phone.
If I speak like this, can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So I know Al already read the memo that kind of went over a high level of why we don't think this street is necessary or even recommended from a safety perspective. But I also wanted to point out some of the inaccuracies that kind of went over in the summary there. It showed the level of service for the existing plus project conditions and showed a level of service F. That was primarily due to queuing on US 89 without a signal at that location, with all this development, commercial and residential built. So the queuing was backing up past the residential access and causing a poor LOS. So we did summer, or we did fix that in the next table. We recommended a signal on US 89 that would improve that right back to an A, because that intersection is not the issue. As you can see, all of the intersections are at F because of queuing backing up from cars not being able to turn onto the highway. So once you alleviate the queuing issue on US 89, all these intersections work at level of service A, which is the highest level of service you can get. uh, which is the highest level of service you can get. Um, and, and the, uh, projected road, um, through that area, uh, wouldn't, um, it wouldn't really provide better, um, all that much better connectivity. Uh, as I discussed in the memo, the, uh, number of cars that would likely use that, uh, road from the project, um, is very minimal. It would mostly be used by, as a cut-through street from anyone in that area off to the, uh, the northeast. Um, and using it as a cut-through street would decrease the safety of all of the driveways on the road. It would increase the speeds and the traffic volumes on that. Um, what's supposed to be a local road. Um, and as, uh, Trent just discussed, um, having a local road with connectivity and cut-through, uh, is not the purpose of a, of a local road. Uh, so for that reason, we didn't, um, uh, we don't think it's a necessary connection. Uh, for emergency services, there's, um, they can already use the church parking lot to cut through there if needed. Um, and it's not recommended from a safety perspective due to the uh, increased speeds and driveways along that corridor.
Thanks, Scotty. Uh, Eric Roberts. Stuart, thank.
Yep. Can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, can you? Okay. Hey, I, I appreciate the time tonight and, um, you know, I've been working with Al and his family on this project for probably over three years and, and, uh, when Al first approached us in regards to this, um, part of what intrigued us and having done a lot of these projects over the years is that there was a proposed light that was going to be here at twenty-six-hundred and, and that twenty-six-hundred was going to kind of be what I'd call a collector for between Main Street, uh, where the high school is on down to Highway eighty-nine. And because of that, that would give us the ability. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, but that would give us the ability to do a commercial development there. Part of the reason being is, is that's where the majority of the traffic that's going to be kind of what we'd call in this trade area is going to use twenty-six-hundred in order to, um, to access Highway eighty-nine and then again Main Street. And so when Al showed me this, I was like, ah dang, I, we need as much, you know, one of the biggest things for these retailers and, and QSRs and fast food folks is traffic counts because that gives them an idea of what the potential business and volumes are going to be of the stores that they're going to look to open there. And, and so when Al showed me that, I'm like, you know, we need as much as much traffic as we can on twenty-six-hundred where that commercial development is in order to get some of these folks to commit. We've been working on a deal now for a couple of years. I feel like I'm hoping we're getting closer on that um, here over the next little bit, but part of what they're counting on is, is that twenty-six-hundred is going to be kind of the main road and access again from Main Street on down to Highway eighty-nine. And because of that, that's why they're willing to spend the money and develop this property. And I think if we do things that take away from that, where the traffic counts are going to be minimized a little bit, that we lose some of the traction that we've currently got with that because that's what they're counting on in order to make their numbers work and to make this project happen. And so it, it, it does make me a bit nervous in regards to that. Um, and, and, and I think we, you know, I look at it, we need to push all the traffic we can onto twenty-six-hundred and have that kind of be the main thoroughfare again. You know, there's issues, I think, with thirty-two-hundred and then twenty-two-hundred and what we would hope is, is at some point in time, there would be a light here and that then we could have a, a, a commercial center right there that would thrive because of what, you know, what's been put in and what twenty-six-hundred is and with the light and then with what the tenants are that we're going to put in that center. I'm pretty confident, uh, based upon some of the, the responses we've had over the last couple of years of what we're going to be able to develop there. And we're working forward on that. And hopefully over the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to, um, sit down with you and kind of walk through a plan. But I, 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 yeah, I would just, I, I just makes me real, very nervous about the commercial end of it because of the traffic and, and twenty-six-hundred's not obviously at this point in time, not a major road. And that's what we need to try to do is, is, is turn that into that a bit in order to make this commercial thrive. And if we don't, I worry that we're not going to be able to, to get them to commit and to finalize and to go here. Any questions?
Um, I, I have some, but I'll wait my turn.
Okay.
Anything else, Al?
Any questions?
So just if you would be available, we'll turn over to the council and we'll probably have some questions for any of those online or for you. Thanks.
Counselor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty, Level Six, Mandeville City Master Plan, Remove twenty-five-hundred South, and I'd like to add, um, prohibit access on twelve-hundred West between twenty-five-hundred South and twenty-six-hundred South.
Here we have a, um, a, a motion to, uh, approve the amendment to the Transportation Master Plan to remove twenty-five-hundred South with a condition that access on twenty, on twelfth West between twenty-five-hundred South and twenty-six-hundred South would be prohibited. Now, before, before I ask for a second, I'm, I need to understand whether that's, you're suggesting that that is part of the motion or part of the resolution? And I don't find, but I just leave it up to you. Okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you put it in the resolution, I don't think you needed in a motion.
Yeah.
So that would be a motion to amend the Transportation Master Plan, including adding an item three to the resolution that would say this, uh, this amendment to the Transportation Master Plan is accompanied by, are you writing this down? Accompanied by a prohibition of access onto twelve-hundred West between twenty-five-hundred South and twenty-six-hundred South. Is that your motion? Yes. Okay, is there a second? Second, Garrett. Thanks.
Well, let me, let me explain it. Um, I think, actually, we live in just such a amazing country that we have just regular people that get elected with no city planning skills or stuff. And to take all this information and be able to help design and build a city, we've been on the council for seven years. And Nibley's, uh, is in a rapid growth city because we have amazing staff, a small city that we have, have a city of planners and engineers and, uh, anyways, we do good. And the reason we get so many hundreds of houses approved subdivision is because we do have plans. You've seen all the plans that we have between water and sewer even parks and transportation is one of them. So the closer we follow the plan, the quicker the process goes. So this is kind of delayed because we're trying to step outside of the plan to see if what we have will benefit the city and why should be removed. And think about, you might bring up, uh, the Google Earth on this with the satellite.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
Yeah, people online won't see what you're pointing to. Maybe, maybe you might can follow.
Going to go to the parcel viewer? Is that okay? That might be a little quicker.
So to make.
The Google is slow, slow.
Twelve-hundred West. Twelve-hundred West is the main corridor that goes all the way from, um, Airport Road all the way to Highway. There probably need busiest roads or bypass roads next to the highway. And remember that, just, just do a, do a ball of lines. I can still see. It's here. So this, this is how I justify, uh, doing it. This is twelve-hundred West that comes here. And then we, we just go down this way. Um, here we have the intersection. We just spent millions of dollars of doing a roundabout that goes through here that will cross twelve-hundred West. And as we go down more, if you don't mind, um, if you need a little bit more, we have our other roundabout. Yeah. So here we spent millions of dollars for here. It's lots of the plans we connect. And if we can come back just a little bit and maybe expand out so we could show the Malouf building. Thank you. Orientation. Maybe it's zoom here because we have Malouf here. So here we have roads that are planned on. This is road is planned on to hook into another road. This is planned on to hook another road. We have a commercial here, but yet we were nervous of connecting this road through a commercial property. So we started here and we didn't do a commercial. So again, we're on twelve-hundred West. Maybe we can come down a little bit. Just other way, sorry. Yeah. And so start here. So here we have another one. We could have accessed here onto twelve-hundred, but we're trying to protect how many things come here. And then, uh, we have connections here that we're worried about that we put, um, mountable road, um, the mountable intersection here. We've got traffic calming. We've got barriers protect bikes. And then if we come right even here, we could have connected this one through. But again, this is more than a block, but we're connected how many activities that we're connecting on twelve-hundred. So if we come down just a little bit more. And right here, so the road that we have, it's, it's around, it's, it's a cul-de-sac that goes through and it hits here. So it's really not a through road. And then here, this is the subdivision by heritage and we didn't plan to connect it. We're not connecting here. We have a commercial property that we were planning on, on connecting. So my motion was, is to remove any connection here which eliminates or protects twelve-hundred West. Make the developer design the traffic flow that has to go onto twenty-six-hundred. It'll have to go either on the heritage and to go through on the roundabout that we spent millions to protect, that we won't have to worry about this intersection. Me personally, like you talked about frontage, this is a major road. I mean, you think, uh, uh, where you talk about car counts and stuff, you can have crazy amount of car, car counts on here. And I personally want a developer, but you guys are voluntarily not having a connection on here is why I think it benefits the city. We're having this develop here that has to come on here. It'll be more trafficable, which will get us a light to prove, increase that. And it'll have to be designed. If any, any of these need to hook onto there, my motion is, is put twenty-five-hundred as long way you'll be able to access that. So if you can design it by not having it go through there, is why I think that's a, a good motion. Um, and then I know we have the concepts and again, anytime we change outside the line, you, you change expectations. So make it clear the, the plan that presented, the expectation has nothing to do with that. It's just, can we do a development without this road? That's why I think that's a good motion.
Uh, Norm, while you're, while you're coming back, I can, I mean, just to be historically correct. The road that goes through Stone, Stonebridge was not connected to Malouf in part because Malouf is not commercial, it's industrial. And the big fear of the Stonebridge residents was at the time, Malouf was proposing warehouse in an industrial zone, which wasn't approved or accepted use in the industrial zone, not a commercial zone, but industrial zone. And, and they feared semi-trucks rolling through their neighborhood to get to Malouf instead of dealing with all of Malouf's employees have been dealing with since then, on and off of eighty-nine. So historically, that's, that's my perspective of why that road's not connected. And, and also it's, it's that it's an industrial use that we isolated from the residential rather than a commercial. And there, I mean, a warehouse is not allowed in a commercial zone. It's allowed in industrial zone.
I guess.
Okay, minor point.
Yeah.
So let me ask Norm, um, actually ask Al this as well. So Al, I think he said a road north of the proposed church isolates the church. So it, it doesn't make sense to me how having a road next to a church isolates the church. And then the follow-up to go along with the motion that's in front of the council is doesn't eliminating access on twelfth to the church further isolate the church?
Let me have Scotty bring it up. He wrote it up in his report. He's the one, he's the traffic engineer. So.
Okay. So the question for Scotty is how does a road, uh, a road north of the proposed church isolate the church?
Sure.
Yes.
All right. Uh, so putting the road on the north side of the church would surround the church by roads on all four sides. Um, so to access the church from any of the residential developments, you'd have to cross um, streets essentially. Uh, and as far as I know, the last, um, plan that I saw, there's still a church access onto twelfth West. Um, so having a street to the north wouldn't impact the, uh, ability to access the church off twelfth West.
Okay. So what I'm hearing though with the motion in front of us is that that would prohibit the church access on twelfth West. And also Scotty, I mean, the most recent development plan we've seen, the property currently to the north of the church as proposed is not with houses. It's as part of the RM zone open space required. So I mean, it doesn't seem like that, that road separates houses from the church and and even so, it'd only be a small number of houses, but that's open space in the latest proposal north of the proposed twenty-five-hundred South. So what am I missing?
So the issue in there, we don't have a lot of room on that one side of the church problem. There's a whole lot that we can put in there. So the problem of it is, is, um, something has to be, I, I mean, I, like I say, Mary, I mean, Mary, I wish, you know, there was another hundred feet in there. There's not. And so the problem of it is, is something that Scotty alluded to, if you try to create a road in there, you create a dangerous S curve in there. It is there. And I mean, that was brought up even on the twenty-six-hundred South, but hey, look, you got a curve. You have a, a, you know, line of sight issue. And I mean, it's the same issue here. So we have Heritage Drive to a different location just to to alleviate your concern there. So now we're saying, okay, you know, you have an S curve just trying to beat that road on the other side of twenty-five-hundred South that just goes into a subdivision. So, you know, to come back to the question, you know, the church, when they came to us, they said, we want something around the church. We don't want four roads around the church because it creates problems for us. vandalism. They, they have more incidences. A lot of me don't know this. Um, my best friend that grew up in Botwell, Brent Roberts, is managing director for the special projects for church. He is overall construction for the church. And he talks about this. He says, you know, we have to build temples and, and churches in areas where they're well lit. But if we give an area where potential mischievous behavior could happen, so that's a problem. And he talked about different points that they do and they like to have houses around the church just to keep some security, something, someone keeping an eye on the church. And so that was the point in there was we put, if the road went in there, there was no way to put it really limited, put, put houses next to the church. So that was the issue.
And the motion is, is if they need to have twelve-hundred West for access, they need to put the road.
I, I think it is. That's the discussion between, yeah, that's the discussion between churches. I can't get involved in that one.
To be clear, that's what.
Saying your motion is, if they want to act, if the church wants access off of twelve-hundred West, it's, it's, it's only off of twenty-five-hundred, which would be, it's, you know, which is disreliable. Okay. Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't, I don't know. I'll, I'll be quiet for a while. I have other questions, but I'll certainly. Nathan.
I just, I think it'd be helpful, um, if motion, if bringing up the resolution, if it's.
Yeah.
Say.
Does that mean you mean, I have to say your motion again?
No, no, I could, you could read it back.
Oh, love it.
Did we write it down?
Thanks.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Nathan. That's, we, we need to look at our words. At our, yeah, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yes, Gary. I don't know why I get this job, but I got it.
Well.
2506.
That time.
Yeah. 2506.
And it's not even that.
It's 20.
They're a known variable. So I think we tend. Just going down.
Is that, is that a relationship of causation?
Just state what I'm seeing.
Okay. Certainly.
Um, you know, this is a discussion, obviously the church needs to sit down with city proposals things. But I think something that Scotty brought up was very important. Roads and these things, access points should be built on safety being number one. Safety. And if safety is compromised, there's an issue there. And we had that Zoom call back there in June that was discussed was if you have the church there, you know, what about points of safety? And it was brought up multiple times. And I think that's a point that that has to come back. You know, again, we can let the church and the city work that those things out. But the issue is the same thing here, safety. And I think Trent brought it up. You and Stuart brought it up. You have traffic going through residential area probably to pretty high rate speed and volume. I, I don't think the volume would be that great, you know, to a much greater speed. And Stuart's point, that you drive in traffic at 2600 South and the, the challenges that you create in trying to develop out. Now I'll go one step further on a commercial development, what Stuart said. Um, we're in discussion to put these things together on the commercial development, which is built Harris Drive. That's one of the things we're coming to resolution to put those whole things together and they will be put together soon. So number nine would be addressed. So I think the point that Stuart brought up is to frame all the traffic, you know, your traffic to your commercial area, not to the side area, to a front area. That's where we want numbers and highlights. That creates a great opportunity and possibilities there. So anyway, oh, so.
There we go.
Beautiful. Right. Let's see it. Let's see. This resolution is subject to the condition that access on 12th West between 2500 South and 2600 South is probably.
Is that?
Yeah.
Is that reflective of the action? I don't know.
So Al, you're, all right. Uh, I know I'm going to be quiet, but we're on this topic right now. Um, the 1300 West connection that eliminating 2500 South forces more traffic at the 1300 West connection on the 2600 South is actually closer to the roundabout and offers more safety issues than the 2500 South to access the residential development that you're talking about. I mean, it's already a level of service F.
I agree with you on that one because you got an S curve on 2500 South. You've got a curve like this to get to the road or 26, or 1300 West is a straight shoot. So I guarantee, and we've talked about this many times, the traffic reports and Scotty will tell you these things. Whenever you have urban road, that's where your accidents are going to happen.
And we moved Heritage Drive because Heritage Drive was coming out right on the dog leg of 2600 South. So let's just agree that we'll leave that to the traffic engineers.
No, absolutely.
I'll stop there. Nathan.
Just one clarification, you keep talking about the church. From what I understand, that property has not been subdivided and it's not been sold yet. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Trent.
So let me clarify one thing. It's been under contract for ten months. They want to close in October. So we have been waiting. They will not buy the property if they have 2500 South there. They, I mean, they, Trevor came up there, you saw it in that last council meeting, we do not want this here. So does it put that in jeopardy? It absolutely does. So that's a concern.
Uh, let me get that in the record. The church will not buy the property if 2500 South is left in the master road plan. Because that's not what we've heard, but if that's the case, I'll take your word for it. I want it in the record.
And may I make you back and say, I, they won't definitely, but do they mean that we do not want 2500 South? Absolutely. They have told me that 20 times. They told me that this week they don't want it. So I mean, you saw it here back at the last council meeting, they were here. They said, you asked, do we want 2500? No, we don't. Trevor, that was here. And so, um, again, I come back to Scotty's point, you isolate a building with four roads. So that's the concern. I mean, what, name one of the building in S Valley that has four major roads around it.
The temple, the tabernacle. I can go down a list of state centers. And you asked.
Off that in there.
In this motion, in this 12th West, we'll have to go back to.
I think it's a discussion you're going to have to have with church.
No, it's a discussion as part of this motion.
That's, I'm not going to get in front of the church. Okay. The church is, the church had the right to, they need to negotiate that out and resolve it. But the one thing I'd always bring up is safety. What's the safety? Some of the, Scotty did that up. He said on that 2500 South, he says, the access points for emergency vehicles can go through the parking lot of the state center and get access to. So it's a safety issue. So.
Nathan.
Yes. Speaking on safety, there is no way, me personally, if I'm going to the new 2500 South without the timing of Heritage Drive being resolved for that second access point for the residential. And so I would, um, shy, like, if we're going to do this one, my, we're going to need to add that it's got to include heritage in the, in the residential proposal as well. But I'm not, that's the safety that I'm most worried about is we're only going to have one access point. And if the commercial takes five months to develop, then we'll have it in five months. And if it takes 52 years, we'll have it in 52 years. And we need that second access point as soon as this residential goes in. So. I'm not making a motion of saying that there's no way I go for this ad is without having the residential two access points figured out.
Aaron.
I wonder if I could ask Scotty about, uh, the technical curvature of an S curve. I mean, I understand in theory what an S curve is, but maybe Scotty, you could tell us like, uh, is an S curve, like my street curves a bit? Is that an S curve or is there some angle of curve at which becomes an S curve and is then dangerous? Because seems like from a lot of conversations we've had recently, especially around 1200 West, we've heard different traffic study engineers that curving roads actually slow down traffic. So I guess that's kind of contradictory is what I'm understanding. So Scotty, can you speak to that a bit?
Uh, yeah. So an S curve, uh, is basically just a curve, uh, or a road that curves twice, um, uh, shaped like an S. So, uh, uh, the, um, yeah, like you said, it can slow down vehicles, but it will increase the number of crashes, uh, just to the inherent nature. Um, when roads are icy or, um, just anything like that, they really reduce sight distance. Uh, so you can't have, um, any driveways or access points, um, on them. So it, it just adds a lot of, uh, safety hazards. I guess there's some pros and cons to it, but, um, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're kind of breaking up there.
Sorry. What, what'd you miss?
Uh, you were saying it adds pros and cons, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It has pros and cons. Like you said, it can slow down, um, vehicles, but it also, uh, increases uh, safety or, yeah, safety risks, um, just by the inherent nature of, of having curvature. Uh, it reduces sight distance. Uh, there's, uh, more issues with, with icy roads and, and going off the road. Um, so there's just more crashes on curves. So yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Uh, and then, I mean, this is not a very, um, piece of, uh, from the post plaque where the edge of the homes are on the west side to, to 12th West, like, oh, it's not very far. Is there, can you tell me how far that is? Do you know? Maybe I'll go a little better. Especially it's open space, like.
I mean, it's like one city block, right? So it's probably six, 700 feet, I'm guessing, yeah.
Yeah. From there to half 2500 South, Al, and then it would need to kind of curve up a bit. So you're saying the rides connected to the, you know, to the ones.
Right, Gary. And we first ran it on this property, we may not know this, we talked about that. And so it was in the past and he said, you know what, that, that, that intersection is not going to be reliable. So I wish we got that in rise because if we took it at that time and that's fine, I mean, we'll go forward with it. But the problem was in the discussion back then, three, four years ago, was the fact that it had to curve up. And it hadn't come up and try to meet the other road on the other side. It just creates a natural curve, I think. So that's the problem. And, and then the fact that we can't even put any homes in there, it's very restricted because we have setbacks departments on the other issues. We've got a trail, we've got to put in there, everything like that. We can't put anything in there really make, make the thing work. And so, I mean, it makes it very tight if, if it'll do that. So, but the problem is the curve has to go here and then go back and go up. It's just, we've looked at it, it's virtually impossible to do it just to get, the only way we can do is is have to try to adjust setbacks or something, trying to get numbers to work in there. And, uh, Trent would know more, a little bit more about that. He knows all the setbacks in there, so.
But I just get a clear case, that's if the property is set into the church.
Right. So you're saying, are you saying that I have to make the church contract? Are you saying?
If you let me follow up on that Scotty's question. So Scotty, you're a trained engineer according to accepted line of sight clearings. How far south of the beginning of the S curve on 1200 West would be required? If there's a road south of that S curve? What is the line of sight requirement that we're talking about? We've been talking about generality of what's safe and what's not. Let's go to the engineering practice. How far south would a road that goes west off of 1200 West have to be to achieve the line of sight safety requirement? Make it not.
I guess, can you clarify what you're asking?
Okay. So Aaron has, we, we talked about how a road that goes west off of 12th West is not safe because of the S curve. How far south? Give me a coordinate. There's already a 2500 South there for reference. How far south of the S curve would be required to meet the line of sight safety for a road leaving 12th West and going west? Let's not say it's not safe. Let's talk about what would be safe. What's the requirement, engineering standard?
I'm still not understanding what you're, what you're asking.
Can I try to clarify that maybe just to make sure? I, I think, are we talking about the S curve on 2500 South from 12th West into the subdivision?
I think we're talking about, I thought we were talking about the S curve on 12th West. Which S curve are we talking about?
I was, I was thinking that 25, that's 2500. He's saying if our S curve goes from there, connect into the road, and he's saying that is unsafe because the road doesn't go around. And if it curves down, it's potential in his development. And then it's curved, so it's insane to get it to the site.
I don't know what that line of sight requirement is. I mean, all right, other questions off, let it go. Nate?
Um, this is for staff. What would it take for the analysis of traffic impact study to 2500 South? See what changes made to that intersection? What would be required?
We would exactly either work with this consultant or hire our own consultant to do our own traffic study. Uh, I, that would take time. I don't, I mean, the, the month and a half-ish, if we are to go get our own, if we were to work with this gentleman uh, and work through, I'm sure we could do it much faster.
With some financial.
Yeah, yeah, it would cost us a little bit of money. I can't imagine it would be crazy, but.
For that, before I give up time is, um, this is more for the, um, a lot of talk about we'd like the light, we'd like the light. Have we actually talked and had conversations with you doc about the plan to get a light there because our experience? It's kind of hard.
Stuart, I'll let you come into that conversation. You were there. So Stuart and I, uh, met with you doc and.
When, please, when, uh?
It was a year and a half ago. And they said, yes, there will be a light there. They told us right there. And it was Stuart Adams, the Senate President and, and, uh, the director of Udoc. He says, yes, we'll have a light there. So not, oh, they, Stuart, they told everyone here, Stuart, Stuart Adams and yes. So, so we, we go back, so, no, let me. No, I'm just remark. So let me come back on that. They have approved a light there, Aaron, they have. We just have to get, some of the Stuart thing came back to, we have to get the traffic button. As soon as traffic button goes, then the light goes. And so they, yes, there is a light going there. No, obviously, we need to say. But I think this, they, they, Stuart stays there.
Yeah, it's a little bit like chicken and egg, like can you, the grocery store go in? If there's not gas volume or need a captive volume, that person, the grocery store, if the grocery store brings gas volume, how do you go about getting gas volume on 2600?
Or we do have that, we do have, they have, uh, it's just, they will, they, they told us we could pay for it. And they would let us put the one again. So those lights are $600,000. Or you doc pays for it. So yes, I do have a.
You have the intention that you doc will pay for it?
No, you doc, so they said they would, they've authorized the light to go there. Okay. So there's two things in there. They said, it's the question was Rob, by on who pays for it? So he says, well, the developer has to pay for it. And said, hold on, developer doesn't have to pay for it. So they came back, we talked to Stuart Adams, we talked to, uh, the director of Udoc. Right there, Stuart Thane and I were on the phone and he says, he says, we've got to pay for it, set aside. They made us go back and do a traffic study, tells engineering. They came back and says, you have to meet a certain threshold and we'll put the light in. So, but then they came back and said, let you put the light in. They gave us that authorization, we paid. So that has been approved. Yes.
So the light has been approved by you doc, but you not, you doc has not agreed that they will pay for it?
They have told us verbally coming from Aaron's point, they have told us that they have paid, put money aside for it, that they have not been.
So when the potential commercial developer was here getting a concept plan approved, we asked him about the light. How important is the light to your commercial development? This is a quote, he said, it's not important at all. I said, why would you say that? That's going to help your commercial development. He said, as soon as I say I need it for my commercial development, I will have to pay for it.
Right.
So your commercial developer, potential commercial developer has told this council, he doesn't need the light. Now I want the light, don't get me wrong. But the warranty light is very different than paying for a light. It's different by about six or $700,000.
So what they get on that, since I've been through this process, I think exactly, because we've been through it three times. So let me get on that, since I've been through this process, exactly, because we've been through it three times. So, but as soon as the traffic volume gets there, then you got us warranted to pay for the light. That is true. So.
Meeting warrant. Meeting, let me, let me go, let me go, Trent, meeting warrant for a light is different than paying for a light.
Well, no, what they're saying is then they would pay for it, that.
So you're telling this city council that you got to pay for that light?
If we have a traffic volume there, yes, so we had to go back and do the traffic, man, we had to go back and do the traffic study, I was right in the middle of that. So we had to do the traffic study and and Scotty can talk about that. And remember, we did two or three options on that to look at that, and then went to you doc, you doc came back to us and said, okay, you you are authorized to put a light in there. But we have to meet certain traffic volumes to to have them pay for it.
Be clear, because I'm going to hold you to this.
Oh, you can hold it to me because that that's, that's been the discussion.
Be clear, I'm understanding it correctly, that you're telling me you doc has not only. Warranted, uh, warranted the light. But they will also pay for the light.
As soon as we get the traffic volumes in place.
Well, um, I have been involved in the eighty nine ninety one study, every meeting that you mentioned.
Yeah.
And that study has concluded, it's not ongoing. The last slide, I don't, I don't want to. I don't want to face this reality, but the last slide of that presentation from the contractor was. Do we really need a light there?
I saw that.
And I warned you, I said, Al, I just came from a meeting that you ought to say, do we really need the light there, now here's how this is going to get resolved. And this is as a, uh, CMPO briefing on Monday from. Ryan, who's now replaced, uh, Chestnut. He said. The next step is a corridor agreement. And, and I said, can we be in the corridor, can we be in the drafting of the corridor agreement, because we're worried about whether? That light is going to be warranted, going to be allowed. And that's before we ever get to the point of paying for it. He said, yeah, you can be involved, we'll let you come and argue. The, uh, relevance of that light and the corridor agreement, which replaced the one that is currently expired. So that doesn't sound like you not saying. They, I've never read from what you sent before that they would pay for it, I've never read that. Okay, I look forward to reading that. Because that'll help me go to a corridor agreement with you doc and say, look, guys, here's what you have in writing that you not only agree there will be a light there. It's in writing that you will pay for the light there.
As soon as we get a topic.
I don't care. They will warrant it and pay for it, I will look forward to reading that and I'll show it to them.
Scotty was all about that, because it's something there, so we know what that is.
Can I interject?
Yeah, Trent, go ahead, I got you up for it.
So, uh, we do all of the, um, traffic signal studies, reviews for, uh, you dot across the state. As soon as this intersection meets traffic volumes, uh, which on a high speed road like US eighty nine. Is only about seventy five vehicles, and based on our council when we did this study, it was already at fifty left turns. Um, as soon as that warrant is met, you dot. Will almost always pay for the signal unless it's some extenuating circumstances, they don't have. Um, an impact fee program to have developers pay for roads on their, um, facilities. Uh, so if this roadway is servicing more than, um, one single development, which this roadway is servicing most of the city. Uh, you dot will just pay for the signal as soon as it meets the vehicular volume warrants on that intersection.
Okay, thank you, Trent, I look forward to seeing that in writing.
Hey, hey, Mayor, this is, Mayor, this is, this is Stuart Thane, and that's why the developer told you. That he didn't need it because he knows and has done enough of these at the grocery store. Once they open up, we'll hit that warrant number. In regards to that, and then there's a liability issue, I believe, with you done on why. Once that hits the warrant, why they have to put those in, so.
I look forward to showing those words to you, Doc, as we go down the path of the next corridor agreement. So, thank you. Justin, did you have something?
I think he answered my question, my question is going to be in the modeling and predicting. What kind of timeframe would they expect this to warrant? It sounds like it'll be short, but if you wanted to mop up that question.
I. I've kind of given up on timeframe and just hope it's there before my grandkids come. Uh, we've been working on this a long time.
We talked about the configuration of the flat and whether it would be easy or hard for utility vehicles to get in there. Uh, I don't see a chance of maybe to pull out the new, the updated flat with the road, it's public road and and that whole circle. Yes.
Yes, and.
Yeah, so maybe speak to us, see about, um, the level in terms of like plowing and. Utility maintenance. So, uh, in, in, I'm clarifying the parking lots, there's three parking lots, so I see, and those will be privately on the flats and. So even though the, so that parking lot in the upper right. Double Wolf has overflow parking for townhomes as well as public parking for the. Uh, pickleball courts and hot lot. But there wouldn't necessarily be a public parking lot dedicated on that lot. For that part.
And, you know, I think that's a discussion we have, it's a very good point in there, is because I think, coming back to what Sir Robert said is, you know. You, you know, I I think pickleball courts, I mean, they brought the something previous council meeting, they put them right next to our house, and that thing is busy the whole time, and so. I think we have to look at that a little bit more and just make sure that we, you know, make sure we have a good access. Just wait, you know. So, thanks, Aaron.
I'm looking at council.
I mean, I haven't spoke yet, and give my reasoning, I mean, I have spoken on this before, regardless of development, I have some issues about. Like, like Norm said, I mean, I don't, I'm an engineer, but. We do try to do our homework here, we make sure we're able to understand the issues, we're making our decisions. When we first did this, and when it was like clear back last. July or August, I don't know, when we get them out there first. And we stood on that night, discussion with Tom, because it was way too close. The roundabout can have another access here. And he showed me thirteen of your, and we walked, we walked that. The other issue I have is. Where that connects north on the north boundary, so it does have to have the curve because. I mean, you're, you're, you're telling the developer that can't use one side of the road they have to put in without doing that curve. So I think that's an issue, and then running that road along Spring Creek, which has no connections to the road, which makes me wonder. Maybe we can plan on that road, exactly before or after Spring Creek, because. There's nothing in Spring Creek connecting to this road in the master plan, because those, it can't, because those roads, that's a round circle in Spring Creek. And it's a private driveway into the back, so can't be an access, it isn't access if this road went through. And so, because of the, and then the other issue I have is, the only way that she were having with twelve hundred west. Mountable. Islands. And putting those there, and then when we had that traffic engineer here, explaining twelve hundred west in the public hearing. He specifically said in his slide, talked about a four intersection and a sixty six percent higher incident rate than a three way. Which is only twenty two percent. And for me, that just kind of isolated that, I don't want a four way unless it's a roundabout, and. Because I think that just creates more issues, but those mounds, as we've seen with Stonebridge and other things, you have to slow down a fair amount to make that turn. Where this is a major, it'd be a major corridor. So much traffic. That's why I said, normally saying that, because. I want to limit the access to all of this, and I think you create more problems than.
So when we talked about this before, Garrett, we looked at the distance from the roundabout at twelve west and twenty six hundred seven. To thirteen hundred west, which is closer than the distance that you're worried about at twenty five hundred south and.
Yeah, and.
Should we get rid of thirteen hundred west?
I told Tommy, we're going to make it a return on me, but. Right now, we're. As the developer, he's going to design, that's what he's going to do, because I believe that the smooth access is a review, that has to be part of it. That not only will it mitigate that, it's going to be part of their development process.
So while, while we're on this, and that comes to be quite full. And and I'm engaged more in this discussion than only. It's important because I'm realizing we have four people. I may actually, I might actually have to vote on this. And so I'm a little more engaged than usual. Even though I'm a member of council, normally a non-voting member. But tonight that might change, so I have one more question about S curve, since we're not talking about S curves on twelve west, we're talking about S curves on these east-west roads. I mean, really, look at the S curve that goes on to the heritage drive.
I didn't design that.
It's your proposal.
It was, it was a discussion with the city engineer and the developer, so, um, I wasn't involved in that discussion. So, because if you remember. We had, I mean, when the previous city engineer was in here, we had that road going down. The turn. Just down there at the bottom, and then looking back, we said, well, it has a line of sight, now there's some more trash. And Scotty can talk a little bit more about that, it's a whole nother discussion, but they said there was sufficient line of sight to meet state code. That everyone knew that there, I didn't. I'm hoping they're so told, throw that one out, please.
So addressing your S curve, so it's not safe on the east, but safe on the west.
The, the issue there was to, to, to have.
Okay, we'll come back to that, Stuart, I hope you're still online, because I have commercial development questions, but Aaron was next. And then Nathan.
Uh, well, I made my adjustments. In the interest in creating an alternate motion that puts something about heritage drive access.
I, this is mostly a question, uh. Or, I think, it feels like Aaron and Norm specifically. Uh, is the distance of the access of twenty five hundred south to the roundabout still a concern? And is that why I was saying?
That was my initial concern, stood out there, felt way too close, then, thought it should be thirteen hundred. Okay, but yeah, the other issue for the. The multiple. Islands. You know how much it's, when I make that turn, this is going to be a high volume, higher than normal residential speed road. I just think that creates a whole other problem for us. I think we can eliminate, just moving many access upon twelve hundred is possible, using the roundabout. Right, so the distance is.
So Gary, you know that twenty five hundred, sorry, twelve west is is not only partly built, but the twenty sign.
I know.
It's done, and there aren't any mountable islands at twenty five hundred south on that sign.
You should don't give that, since it is across the street.
The design, the, the funding is in place. There, there are lots of works considered in the elements.
The other access was Sierra and.
So there may be some south of the roundabout, but. South.
The access to one to one.
Twenty five hundred south is already built. The east side. We had, we're going to tear out houses.
No. Being mounted, that doesn't seem long, but. Mountable. Islands.
They can require on the south, Justin, you know.
Well, we would have to look at the specifics and decide, I don't, I can't say for certain, there would be what there are requirements that are code to, to rest traffic calling.
Right. We would require traffic calming for sure. Which could help mitigate, by the way, I, I, I think the traffic calming could help mitigate some of that cut through traffic. If it, if it's appropriately designed as well. Just, just something to consider.
Nathan, did you have something next?
Well, um, I just, the, the distance was something, it sounds like that's been resolved as far as thirteen, but I did a, a. A quick, like, review of every roundabout's value. And the distance between that and the next road, so I think this one's about four fifty, that seem approximately.
I think it's closer to six hundred, yeah.
Okay, so I may be off on my calculation by about a hundred feet, it's like, but, uh. If you go to our own twelve west and, um. Down by my house, thirty two hundred. The thirteen-ish area, you know, yeah, we down, 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 down. Left, right there, so that intersection there at thirteen fifty.
I don't, yeah.
That is. To me, like, that's like the closest one. Sounds like that is actually very close. Then like, there's other examples of Providence, I think Providence is actually a good example, at the church. Access points, they're very close to that amount of help. So if you want to give an example of what this area might be like, it becomes a great place to go, they don't give a street, they do have an intersection basically. Basically, some of the streets. But if they've got to access some of those streets. There's some, I think it's going to show a good example of this, the house. Especially where it sounds like the church is pretty committed. Right there, that intersection. That's very similar. So that's good. But it's not like. Um, the stars actually here.
Reason you have access is, is to, to provide roads or services to that parcel. Here we have a completely blank parcel, and they're voluntarily having access to there. They, they, they don't, and add service to that, but they have.
I used to talk about church. Or your, 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 yeah, church there. Church and school there. People, they're two separate parts. I'm just saying, the church has access on the north road. And the west road, which is very similar to what is being proposed currently for that spot, so if you don't like that. You don't, saying no, nothing of the twos, you essentially eliminate. I think that's just a good example of what it's private. There's a couple of examples, but it sounds. I think during Camden High School is another example.
Then the parking lot. Access the.
If you, they would, anytime you do, they would pick out.
Yeah.
So we've, we've got a. So we've, we've got a lot to. You know, we're talking about selling stuff. When you do a plan, your plan is somewhat there. Put that parcel in. There's voluntary, say, we want access to that. I don't know if the church, if that's, you can sell it. It's, it's, and you. Do that, it's so, you have access to this. That's why I've tended.
Justin.
So I think it would be complimentary if we could see, or attorneys awake, Joel Yellowhorse, you, you out there, buddy?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm curious to know on Norman's motion that he made about no other access is on twelve hundred west. Whether you're comfortable and confident that if, you know, whoever. If however, whatever happens on that piece of property that's left over, right now we're talking about it being a church. But if, if Norm is successful in his motion, we have the legal standing to be able to restrict the access onto twelve hundred west. And it would be a binding resolution. Or are we going to have the same, some legal fight with somebody that's going to come in and fight us about that? Have another issue about whether there can or cannot be an access. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, um. I think the highway code has a provision about it that does give. Um, some rights to landowner when it comes to access. Onto a road, so yes, there, there could be a dispute, I think. Um, the, the city would have some discretion when it comes to, you know, things like safety and making sure an access is appropriately placed. But I think the city is the highway authority, they have to follow transportation code. And there, there, there are some rights that the landowner does have.
Is that? Cause it's not, it's not subdivided. They wouldn't be able to subdivide, provide an access. So, so part of the defense is you can't subdivide it because you don't have access because of this. That makes sense. Cause we're giving access on. Twenty-six hundred. You just couldn't split that off.
Yeah, it ju- it just seems to me like. We'd almost need the existing property owner to agree to that.
Yeah. Based on, so you. So it's ours property. Family's property, you could go deep restricted.
Yeah, that, that.
Right. You, I mean, anything you can. Doc. The parties into agreeing and put it on the flat and deep restricted. But I'm not sure, Joel's here to answer it, Joel.
Yeah, that, that, that would, that would work if they signed an agreement and reported on the property. They could. They'd ride to us.
Thane, I, I have, Levi, would you pull up the latest? Residential develop proposal. And Thane, I hope you can hear me, if, if you do say yes, please.
His computer just died. He said, man, this conversation, come on, retreat. Okay, Eric, let me, let me get him on the phone.
I showed us the parcel, so you have. If you divide that again. Careful, please. Deep restriction. You'd have to add that to. By the prescription, the parcel, I would, I would make that.
I kind of was going to. So most of the.
Here's the question, so I believe Thane said.
Stuart Thane.
Uh, Stuart, Stuart Thane, yeah. The man with two first names.
I'll tell him that.
Of, of whom I respect immensely, telling that part to you. I believe Stuart Thane said that it would be an advantage to commercial opportunities. To go with this proposal, which specifically takes a frontage road. That we have long planned, parallel to eighty-nine ninety-one. As a commercial road. And is currently zoned commercial on both sides of Heritage Drive. And would turn half of that road, one side of that road, the east side of that road that's already zoned commercial into residential. And that's, that's what this proposal does, correct?
Which, well, yes, because it was brought up. So let's go back and discuss that. So back there three months ago, when you came up, you said, hey, look, our density was, was. Misconstrued, I mean, Norm was great. You came back at us and said, well, you, your units, you know, everything's out of whack. And so we went out, proposed it, move that out there. The hell you got.
No, no, no. My question.
You say, well.
No, no, the city never told you to submit a rezon request.
Oh, yeah. Soon as I tell us.
All I want to talk about is the commercial opportunity on Heritage Drive. And I have trouble understanding how. Property that's on the east and west of Heritage Drive, which is currently zoned commercial. And by the way, currently matches the concept plan that the potential commercial developer has shown this council and the council adopted. With commercial property on both sides of Heritage Drive, how eliminating commercial property? That zoned as such and proposed as such. Into residential aids the commercial development.
Seen the last proposal.
I'm, I'm not privy to that, Al, you know that.
Yes, what I'm saying in here is there are other issues that we're dealing with right here. I brought up the counts. Okay, I promised up multiple times, I got seven balls and I made a dig here. And I brought it. Just one thing. And we can't get rid of one thing, you just. Let's get this resolved and go. You can sit here for a year or two or something like that. Stuart made a comment, he says, this thing's hot. On the commercial side, and he says, you take it by now. He brings up the example, and he had a city manager said, oh, we, we can't have this. They lost out on Costco, it's hard, we. He said, they have been begging him, get Costco to come back in there, there's a way. And the thing of this, he's brought up to me in this last week, he said. There are sixteen cities, sixteen cities. That would like to have what this opportunity for different city has. And he said, I can't get them, he says, dude, does the city recognize what the opportunity is there? I said, I don't know, I don't deal in this thing. But he said, this is a big deal, and I wish Stuart was still on the line, I tried to call him again. But that's the issue there, is trying to develop traffic count for the commercial center. So you can have an expanded area for commercial. Now, why did we try to? Expansion? Is because the first proposal. I'll go in to explain everything. You want to explain everything, I'll explain everything. When they first came and proposed, they said, hey, look, you know, we want this area. Then it came back and said, we. Now they're looking just on the north side, do they want to expand on it? Yes, they do, but it depends on traffic count. They have to drive the traffic count, Stuart knew that quite good. The traffic count on twenty-six hundred south has to be so much. Or you lose opportunities and options for commercial development.
So let me ask specifically again. How does turning land that is currently zoned commercial? On the east side of Heritage Drive? Into houses? Increase the traffic count?
Yeah, sure. Eric.
I'm listening.
So how many acres do we have here?
Nine. Whatever.
Keep going.
Al, just answer the question, let's not play games, just answer the question.
So I'm saying here, acres over here.
How many?
There's sixteen.
Okay.
There's a lot, there's actually more than sixteen. It's actually about twenty. So the question came up, can we develop all this and all this in the commercial? This was phase one. This was phase two. This is phase three, so it was developed in phases. So you come back and say, well, let's take this away. We have seriously probably somewhere in the range of twenty-seven acres. Twenty-seven. So we're going to fill up twenty-seven acres in commercial development? Not right now.
It's not twenty-seven, you just told us it was.
The one south.
There's seven on south. There's, there's all this right here. So this. Is important for the commercial development because they want households close to this to sustain it. They want, they, they know, Stuart's brought this up many times. They want to know how many households are within a quarter mile of the commercial area. And have people in circles. And so to have the, the number of counts in there, there's here. So Stuart's warning us. You travel with this and your opportunity in the losing, and it's decades to get it back. That was just.
So you're telling me that those fifty houses on the east side of Heritage Drive? Are paramount to commercial development happening? Fifty houses on the west side of Commercial Drive, when we're talking about all these traffic counts off eighty-nine ninety-one and twenty-six hundred south. Those fifty townhomes are paramount to the success of commercial on the west side of the road.
So what do you want us to do with that?
Leave it commercial.
What if we can't get it in there?
We've seen a proposal from your. Possible developer that shows it as phase two, commercial development.
So I'm supposed to sit there and wait for six years for that to develop? So who's the developer, the city or?
We've waited for, since nineteen forty-two for commercial development. I could wait another six years if it gets us commercial.
You want to wait another six years? I don't, I think the opportunity is here. Wish Stuart was on the phone and he could go. But man, what I'm saying here is you've got a hot opportunity to do this. Hot, and it's hot. We're meeting tomorrow at ten thirty, are we not going? We'll meet at ten thirty to finalize this. And I'm going to tell you what happens here tonight will impact what that discussion is like tomorrow.
Hey, go on the. Tell me if your potential commercial developer has said. That he wants that property that is currently zoned commercial to be rezoned to residential.
And you can back there.
That's a yes or no?
No, I'll make you back there. The city.
The city has the right.
Because there's a lot of things, there's a lot of. Hey, you got. That's a negotiation you don't want in the middle, because there's a lot. Yes, there are, there are a lot of people to reference. Who are you talking to, the city here? And put it together for the city. Okay? And how much did Stuart talk about tax base a year? One to one point two million a year?
I know all that, Al. You don't have to tell me we want commercial development in Nibley City. You have to tell me that, number one. The commercial developer wants that property rezoned to commercial. I'm sorry, it's already commercial, wants it rezoned to residential.
Who has the right to decide?
The city has the right to zone property within its jurisdiction. That's a legislative action of the city council. That answers your question, who has the right? Now, I'm more than happy to do what the developer of the commercial property on the west wants us to do. But I need to hear that from the developer.
But because you say, I gotta keep this commercial, I can't do anything this?
I'm telling you, it's currently zoned commercial. And it is a legislative action of the city council that they, the council is allowed to say yes and the council is yet allowed to say no.
And the property. It's the right you say.
Here's what we would like you to do.
Excuse me.
No, no, no.
I know it's connected, but I think the discussion is getting support.
Okay. All right, here's, here's why I'm pushing this, let me get the review back. This is a moving target. Right? The whole reason we're even looking at. A potential residential development here. And nine items, we should not be looking at. A commercial development, a residential development in association with the master road plan. The master road plan is a plan of how we connect. Subdivision A, development A to subdivision B, development B. It's not a question of how does it serve my project? The master road plan is how we connect projects, not how it serves individual projects. The only reason. Council asked staff to look at. Those nine items, which were not meant to be inclusive of what might come up in a potential developments. Is the. Interesting number two that used the church property as available land for residential when computing. The density. It's like, where in the world does that come from? So that's why, you know, so, well, the development doesn't need it, but development is based on using church property. In the gross acreage or developable acreage for residential. That's being put into church property. All right, so then that means that we need to go shift this thing to the west and rezon land. And we're still looking at a moving target when in fact what we should be looking at is connectivity. For the city. But we shouldn't even be looking at that plan or any other plan. We should be saying, what does the master road plan say for connectivity in our town? Nathan?
Yeah, I, I agree, right? The threshold for removing something from a master plan is very high for me. And we have gone down the path. Because the proponent asked us to. To look at all these things that may or may not, in our opinion, meet that threshold. And I think that it's too skewed and it's, 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 it has not met that. And the primary reason is, is the thing the staff brought up. And those have not been resolved for me. So the, the threshold of removing something from the master plan, I think that's why we've been down this path, why we looked at these nine, which I appreciate. My opinion, we have not resolved or met that threshold. We're changing our master plan for this because it's, it's too complicated, there's too much going on, there's too much moving targets. I'm disappointed, like, I, I want it to happen just as much as everyone else. But we're talking, you have forty-four-ish acres just to the north here, right? And we, I talked earlier about how. I like creating value and wealth for all the property in Nibley, including your own. Right, and, and we're going to take what is the most entitled property we've ever had and divide it up. I think there's more that you could do here if you looked at. Who you're selling to. And I think we've had this discussion, right? There's, there's plenty of land there. That you could do on your own developing, if, if, if residential is what you want to do. Where you're choosing to kind of enter these other ones. So I agree with you, just talking about the road and connectivity and the threshold for moving twenty-five hundred south for me. Has not been met, but I appreciate the time and effort that we needed to finding out if it was. And with that, I'll make a substitute motion to deny.
There are ten in my associate motion to deny modification of the transportation master plan.
Did I just replace those?
Right.
Yeah.
There's, so now the motion. On the table is to deny modification of the road master plan.
I think I just figured my case and why, so.
I still disagree, I mean, I have a master plan. Plan is followed all the way through on that section of twenty-five hundred. If, if it was that important. Um, that commercial. Just add on the building, why didn't we make it to that? I don't, and then you could point out on the opposite side of the street, we're not, we're just. If, if we really needed every block apart and why would we put blocks apart? I just, uh. I don't, I don't, we need to put roads, it's for roads. I think, I think. If all we need is a four-way intersection, why are we spending millions of dollars on that? I really disagree, I think. I think that road needs to flow, I think that. On the word, just to load it. Because we have roads, it's like you said, connectivity, subdivision doesn't need it. See, I think you're wrong, I tell you, this is putting it here.
I don't see it, I think you're more to tell you this is putting it, heritage, uh, developed, developed. But to connect that little piece in the garden, the path where it goes against the city problem. What does the city property gain by the road next? It's just, it's already, it's already built out on the north. Whereas the other one you showed, you put me to connect the sides. So I, I disagree. I went back and forth, back and forth, it has nothing to do anything other than this road, even if you, if hold up the master. It's just like, oh, it's whatever, it's like not specific. But you know, the subdivision that's in there is, it's just, can, can you do it or you can't? Tighten it a little bit. We personally said, very really, by having, if the church where it goes there, then you have access and twelve hundred. You can't, then they're gonna have to put it in.
Nathan?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with what I'm saying. People, there were mistakes made to the north, now, now, depending as, if I be considered with those properties. Can't do anything about that, I wasn't here. Um, I wish we would have. But my, my question to you, and kind of I guess to those that, why are we so worried about connectivity on twelve? But not the same concerns on twenty six? Right?
That's not up to them, if they were to say that twenty six is screwed. But twenty six we built to have a traffic light.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess what I'm asking is, you're asking for a limitation from twenty five, or where twenty five would be down. Which to me is gonna put more pressure and more outlets on twenty six and or heritage. Why are we so concerned about twelve but not twenty six?
Well, that are both, twelve goes from airport road to highway. These other ones are just a, a road that falls there, these are hard. It's not, it's not, the traffic that on those other. You're always from airport road, and then once they go out, all with your higher skills, another. Okay, so they're not, they're not the city, they're not, they're not the city. Okay, and if you go further like it showed you, they've named, you limited access, so what we're asking, this one is nothing different than we did. Just a couple blocks in. So, I think that's why.
So let me, let me just clarify procedure here. Uh, substitute motion that we're currently debating is to deny. But the effect of Norm's motion, if it fails, is exactly equal to the effect of Nathan's motion if it passes. So, Al, I know you sat down and, you know, you're still welcome to be part of this, but I want you to realize, everyone to realize that the substitute motion doesn't change the substance of this discussion, it just to play, it just changes if you, if a member of council wants a certain thing, if they will vote yes or they will vote no. But the substitute motion doesn't kill the idea of modifying the master road plan.
Well, I, I think it owns several points of progress, brought up by attorneys too, that, you know, a person in Albany. We're not gonna sit here and pay for something you feel like, and you're gonna have to go through and do studies, you're gonna have to identify exactly what's gonna do, you know, happen in there. Does it even have an impact on the commission? Absolutely, it does, Stuart brought it up, so I don't know where we go from here, I don't. Okay, we have, we've sat down with the council, we've walked through the lecture and everything. I don't think you had a developer or family try to sit down and accommodate your request like we have. We, we've really tried to work and put things together and make it work. And if somehow the city can sort of the twenty five hundred south really desperate needs, needs to be there and go contrary to what the commercial developer wants and the, the traffic, two traffic engineers. Then I guess we're out of, we can come to a settlement and figure out exactly how much you wanna pay for it, so.
Joel, yellow horse, you're listening in, so those would be, those would be the kinds, I'm not asking you to respond unless you want to, but those would be the kinds of questions the city would, would be involved in. If you have advice for us, we're all ears, if you don't, we'll continue with our own discussion.
Um, I, I, I think not at this time, no.
Thanks. So Al, let me, let me be very clear about how much I want commercial development for Nibley City. I don't think that's ever been a question. Don't, don't smirk at me.
No, I'm sorry.
Don't smirk at me.
Okay.
Thank you. I want that. I think the council knows we all want that. So when a commercial developer tells the city council they want land that is currently zoned commercial rezoned to residential, I'm all ears. If you come out of your meeting tomorrow with a potential commercial developer and you can have that potential commercial developer tell me in confidence or whatever, he wants that land rezoned from commercial to residential, I'm your boy.
Let me, let me come back to a couple things, and that's where I need to, my, my, your council a little bit here. We're starting to get in fringe upon other contracts and other stations. And obviously the city's a partnership on this thing. But we have to work out the details of this transaction too. And we have to, to make sure for us, we have thought of some things that really benefit the city, really benefit the city, and, and Joel holds we've done some things to concede on some things to benefit the city, it's a benefit of, right? And to see this tonight, it really sours because it just puts to a point where you just say there is no trade-off, we're just being told what to do, and, and I think families here, and I don't wanna speak for my family, but I think my family just saying, you know what? We're not getting anything out of this, so what's the purpose of it?
That'll be for you guys to decide, Nathan?
Yeah, it's going to clear. Al, the motion that I proposed is to continue the discussion uh, whether or not twenty five hundred south should go away. And my proposal is that it should not, it doesn't mean I'm against you developing or anything like that, right? I think the concept and the frame of mind I have to take at the representative is, we had it in the master plan. He was a proponent, asked for us to remove it. And that's the discussion we're having. Right, there's a lot of this other stuff that you've worked on with others and things that are connected. But as far as, because what we're trying to say tonight, I am trying to decide whether or not twenty five hundred south should go away. And the, the motion I made is to continue the discussion and whether or not some feel like it should or shouldn't, I try to respect on traffic, whether or not twenty five hundred south should even move from our master plan. I'll make sure that that.
Oh, I appreciate that.
And I promise you, if your potential, I know, I can't give up on this because I want commercial development, it's family, I know. If your developer, your commercial developer tells me that they want what is currently zoned commercial rezoned to residential, I'm the flag bearer. But I need to hear it from him.
And, and Mayor, that's where it gets into the, the and the areas of your percent right. And the Nathan's, you guys, they're moving parts of me. I just wanna eliminate one thing and get it out, that's all I wanna do. So we want everything, or we're spending so much time on this, it distracts away from bigger things. And that becomes a big issue because we'll have a discussion tomorrow, Joe? Hundred percent will. And does it impact our ability to, to come to a final deal to, to benefit the city? Don't? Hundred percent yes. So what I'm saying here, and I appreciate Nathan to your point there, is, you know, we're trying to make this work. We're trying to make it work in many regards. But then also, we have to look at several aspects. The church wants this here, we wanna give this thing to the church. But it sounds like, you question me, if you move church there. I mean, they can come to the city and propose everything to show exactly how they want it, that's a plot of the church. And so, you know, we, we have to, we have to come to agreement with you. It's, I'll be honest, I feel sometimes like we're being told what to do. And we've lost all our. Is that fair?
Yes.
That's a concern to our family, and so I never wanna get to that. I will get to mutual agreement, and there needs to be trade-off here to work things out. Now, when we came into Nibley, we did talk about twenty five hundred south and that connection there. And yes, it was discussed, and yes, they said, you know, uh, that's not a really important thing, well, it became important, I wish I had got that in mind. That's the one thing there. But if the city really staff and they really then go through studies and do proportionality, you're gonna have to put out some money, you're gonna have to do. And so we're gonna just freelance and do everything in there. And the question that the associate mayor, as it comes back, is what's it due to the rest of the development? Do we wanna do it? That's the question. I, I mean, if we're not, if we feel like we are being run over by a eighteen-wheeled semi-truck, then it just sits there, we're just, we're, we're not going in. So I think it's a discussion to have with the council and everyone say, can we come to an agreement? If not, then we just say we can't do it.
Mayor, have a vote. It takes majority vote to you. Oh, question. There are second, we have to have a second vote.
Voting.
Voting.
Second, so we have a, a motion and a second to proceed with voting. Those in favor of proceeding with voting, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes three to one.
Doing clear.
Yeah.
Right. So yeah, my motion is to. So. Well, yes, what we're voting on right now is needing. I'm just calling any of that.
Okay, so the motion for the council is to deny modification of the master road plan to remove twenty five hundred south. This is a resolution, uh, Cheryl, will you call the roll, please? Uh, hang on, Joel, you're very patient. I know, I'm gonna give Joel a moment.
Thank you, and it'll just be briefly. As I think most of you know, I work at Salve City Department of Airports, I'm Assistant Director of Real Estate and Commercial Development. And we, the airports actually have a number of master plans, and our master plans gets updated. Um, a master plan, the way we look at it is a vision. Then we will have developers who wanna build a hangar, uh, we have Boeing who wants to do some different things. They present something to us. And we are always willing to amend a master plan when we have a specific project, and that project makes sense to make the change to the master plan. We don't let the master plan rule everything. It sets things up nicely, but once we have very specifics, then we're very open to amend a master plan, that's how it works.
Thank you, Joel. So for accounts benefit, me, Joel's been in this, in this for the long haul, he stood up before he made your motion and started making his way to the, so, so don't hate me for that.
I got a feeling we're the, the vote will get up.
Okay. Cheryl, call the roll, please.
Against? In favor?
Councilmember, yeah, what is your vote against?
Councilmember, man cell, what is your?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobson?
I don't need to vote, it's three, three opposed. Yeah, three, so I'm counting that vote is uh, three opposed to not changing the master plan and one in favor.
So I'd like to mod, modify my motion. And if we could keep, we could pull back up.
I, I have to think about this for a minute. Um, I mean, we, we have a, just let me think through this for a minute, right? Do you understand my dilemma? Thank you, um. The original proposal was to modify the master plan. So we have a substitute motion that says we won't modify the master plan, that motion failed. So I need to hear from the council that we're not done with this item. I'll do what you want me to do. We go back to the original proposal or a modified original proposal. I'm not clear. Because well, I'm not sure, I wanna hear from the council that that's the appropriate thing to do, we have a motion that fail. But the original proposal, you know, we've, we've dealt with this agenda item. Do you understand my dilemma? Does anyone else understand the dilemma?
But it, it's clarified, his comment was, he's just seeing if we're done talking now or we're gonna talk to it, that's why we voted on it. By denying, that allows us to continue to discuss this, is why I.
All right, uh, Joel, keep me out of trouble, I'm going to allow this agenda item to uh, have a new motion made. Joel, tell me as our attorney that I'm allowed to do that, Nathan, go ahead.
Yes.
He, well, Joel's wanting to go first, so he'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you, you should be fine the way the, the motion was forwarded, yes. Yeah.
Okay. So we're allowed to proceed with a different motion because the motion to deny failed.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I understood it, because mine was a substitute motion.
Okay, so we need a new motion.
I was gonna keep the same motion, and then where it says prohibited, and then just add that into, uh, deed restrictions. By the property, that touches twelve. On parcels zero three two eight seven dash zero two zero six. Existed by K D E, that's why. So in parcels that we touched on, there was, if the.
So that's fair. Over and you guys, I, I'm, I'm just tracking this, so. Norm, what's the motion? The motion is by the restrictions.
I, we could say that, if, if you say the parcel, it could be as of this date, cuz that, that would take care of it as well. The, I guess the issue with that touched twelve hundred west is, does that affect other parcels beyond this project?
Well, it's specified, twenty five hundred south, twenty six. So that's.
Right, but there's the east and west side of the road. There's, um, so it could say.
Just, just. Just keep it the way I, keep it sweet.
All right, we need Norm to make the motion before we start debating the motion. Second, before we start debating the motion.
So I was, I was just trying to help you through it, cuz I knew you were going back and forth.
Okay. Stand motion.
Yeah.
So Norman Levi, who's typing in, who is talking.
Just make, make sure, make sure that, uh. Parcel as of January thirty, twenty twenty five. So this resolution is subject to the condition that access on twelve hundred west between twelve, twenty five hundred south and twenty six hundred south is prohibited by deed restriction on par, parcel number zero three two two seven zero 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 three as of January thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second? Second, care of it. Let's start again.
Again, I think I think trade offs means access to twelve hundred. Discuss the timing of one that we brought up. As you can be talking about, that's a fire code. If there's some.
Dustin. Man, I just want to make sure Joel, you are understand that motion and you're confident, comfortable that we can legally do that.
Yeah, the way this um, resolution is written, it it it's 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 solid.
It's all. And thank you. I'll just, you know, we're talking about master plans. It is a rare thing. That, you know, me or this council ever go against recommendation staff. Because we use that puts in a lot of time when they're long day experts to do this. And I agree with anything, but the master plan is the important guy, but it's like twenty five hundred. I mean, it was supposed to be there the whole time. It should have been connected to spring creek, community properties. And we've created issues now because now you have to burn it. Can't go straight through it because then you're putting a road which could be used inside of the road. Just think they create some applications and problems and then there's twelve hundred west. Accidents which is that's one of my biggest concerns still. And I think it's working because, you know, in most cases, you know, if this spray feet was stuffed to connect to this room or any of those. And I would say that it's kind of open. But if it was really planned for, we need to do a very job of planning for. We're just gonna make it. I don't, my opinion will make you an amendment to that. So that we can fix it and just something different. Landowners have the proponent, landowners asking that. Maybe it's for doing.
Any other comments, Nathan?
Uh, so Norm, your your thought on the timing of heritage safety is that it would be addressed later in the process with the lack of pulses, et cetera. I don't know how you could do fire. This was one of the best. See, by doing this, it forces that. The staff agrees that.
I mean, we do have to have two accesses.
Yeah, there's no.
Where wherever those two accesses go, I guess we have to work through that.
Yeah, but I mean, in the past, it's something we will have temporary in some cases. Um, I don't want to have the specifics of this case. But we have allowed temporary, we have allowed perhaps gate type only. So there's some variables there that make me hesitant to say for sure or either.
May I, may I speak to that?
Please do.
Uh, yeah, so 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 the the intent is to have permanent access to her heritage. The only reason it's not shown on ours is to to grant the commercial developer more control over their design of that drive and and kind of make them prime on that one. We understand and realize that we have to have two access points for the number of homes we have here. We have a phase one so that we can get the church subdivided, which which we have designed and developed to be under the the maximum house count for a phase on a single access point. So if by any chance the the residential builds out much faster than the commercial, we will have to address, we'll have, we understand, we have to address that by the time we get to heritage. And it may have to get wrapped up in the residential development. Um, but right now we want to allow the the commercial developer the control of that road and the design of that road.
So Garrett and Eric, we're all very interested in.
Just clarifying what what phase, what what terms are these? This would be phase one. Based on this.
Thank you.
Trying to stand where a where one accessibility was for the same.
I think that's your main art discussion. So thank you for sharing that with us. So what? One of the things I've learned in my marriage, right, is now going off the rails, is the need to control expectations. In fact, the secret to a happy marriage is to diminish expectations each year. So.
Good for all expectations.
Um. In a phone conversation with you, Al, I mean, I heard you say, Mayor, you're right. We need to rezone that property from commercial to residential. And 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 let me keep talking and I'll give you a chance. And so each time you said that in that phone conversation, I said, Al, I'm not suggesting that that property should be rezoned. I'm pointing out that it is currently commercial and you're trying to put houses on commercial property and that is not allowed. He said, you're right, Mayor. We need to rezone that property from commercial to residential. And I pointed it out again three times in that conversation. So I'm gonna offer an amendment in an effort to clearly control expectations. It doesn't mean that any sort of discussion with the commercial developer I'm in favor of or opposed to on a specific rezone or a piece of property, except that I want commercial development in that way. And I'll say that again and again and again. So I I'm allowed to offer an amendment. I'm going to offer this amendment. Adoption of this resolution neither guarantees nor implies land use entitlements beyond those in place at the time of the adoption of this resolution or bystanding as a result of application date.
Sorry, I wasn't ready.
Yeah, so I'll come back to it.
Yeah.
My, I mean, this, Joel, tell me if, I mean, this is the way it is. This is, this is the law.
Correct. Neil.
I'll repeat it. You want me to repeat it or is by?
Explain. Uh, show me.
I'm letting the proponent know that if this resolution is adopted, that doesn't guarantee any future legislative action by this council. I'm completely amenable to any proposal from the proponent, from a potential developer, from 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 from. But I'm not, I I have to say this because the mayor didn't say we should rezone that property. The mayor said we have a problem with putting houses on commercial property. And staff said that first. I was just passing you off. So before you speak, Al, uh, that, is everyone clear on my motion to amend? I'll read it back. If you want, oh, you want to read it? You want me to read it now?
Yeah, a little bit slower.
Adoption of this resolution.
Does not guarantee.
Neither guarantees nor implies land use entitlements beyond those in place at the time of adoption of this resolution or those withstanding as a result of application date.
Standing at the time, wait.
As a result.
As a result.
Of application date. That's my motion. Is there a second? Norm. Now I'll listen to you, Al.
I need you to be a basketball official. And then when I have to go out to Al, why don't we go together? We can solve all these problems on that tower drive. Okay, fair. And then we go for the capsule.
Okay.
No. So two things real quick on that. Like commercial developers change this round two or three times. And it's been, I mean, we spent a lot of money trying to accommodate. It's been I mean, we've spent seventy five years trying to be gone here. I mean, you see some of the things in there. We brought that up with some people sold together and then you know, dealt with how to break your lot, how to go store. So I'll sit here, it's over here and all something like this. So we try to accommodate that. So that's part of the issue in there is trying to accommodate the erosion, trying to keep that that flyer going. So the issue of changing, Levi was a hundred percent right. What we wanted to do in there is so he, he brought it up. I'll bring Levi.
Okay.
He was good. But the issue here is we tried to keep this into a small section because we can't do all these homes together at the time. It's not a capability. You have to build that out a little bit. So it was the sectioned off. There's driving, like three units in there, just trying to get real simple and build across there. That's what it was. So some discussion that went before the council back there about three months ago, where the property was so small, and we had issues with density and all these other concerns was to broaden that out. Now, on our commercial and I want you to get involved with this because it's very there's a lot of it's challenging. I hate it. I want you to get involved with the negotiations on the commercial developer in there. But that part right now is he's not on it. So that is not in this proposal.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that this council has looked at a proposal from a commercial developer that was a concept plan that included commercial development of the property in question. So that's all I have to go on. I don't want to be in your negotiations with the commercial developer to sell your land either. But I would like you to tell your commercial developer this. If the commercial developer can tell me what he wants, I will carry the flag. I'm not involved in the negotiation. I'm not involved in what you want, what he wants, what this is, who pays for what, da 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 da. But if you're a commercial developer, please tell your commercial developer, Joel, tell your commercial developer tomorrow morning, when you meet with him, tell the mayor what the commercial developer wants to make this happen. And unless I'm breaking the law or doing something stupid, I will be the flag bearer to carry that to the council.
Mayor, we, and you're right, we have talked about that because the council and everyone's been so supportive of this. We've brought that up many times that the city's behind this issue. But it takes a lot from every party here. I wish you could see every part that is in that negotiation. I don't want you involved with that because it's too much of a headache to deal with it first place. We're trying to work through that. And the thing I'm gonna promise you, Mary, and the council, we are busting our yankers trying to get this thing through. And it gives me a lot of heartache. Can you ask my wife how many nights I have spent sleepless for the last week thinking about this? Because it is a lot of risk. And I've asked Joel, Joel's right in the middle of those negotiating, that he'd be a hundred percent. We are trying to benefit you, the city, and trying to get that going in there because it is a big deal.
Agreed. All right, so you ask. I'll ask your wife. I'll give you my wife's phone number and you can ask her too. I mean, this is not an easy process and and no. This is, I mean, if Al wants you to speak for him, Al can ask you to speak for him, but we need to wrap this up at some point. I don't. We don't need to compare stories about sleepless nights and how much effort has gone into this. I mean, let's go back to how many times the council talked about uh, road agreement and an addendum on the road agreement and then another addendum that violated and threw away that addendum. And we can talk about, we can talk about, we can talk about. I appreciate your efforts. You have your job. We have our job.
So to clarify your motion, the way I understand it, that pretty much anything that was presented other than this road is just a contest. So there's no there's no guarantee of anything. There was only no anything. Um, the only thing that was on the agenda was to, the road going around.
Correct.
Okay.
And here we are goofed up, um, looking at proposals on developments and everything else to talk about the road plan. Nathan, thank you for that. Now, with all due respect, sir, I don't know who you are. I'd call you by name. If Al would like you to speak, I'm I'm happy to let you speak, but you must come to the mic if Al wants you to, and then you have a chance to speak. But you're speaking on behalf of the proponent. Um, yes, no, I need an answer. Because I interrupted you and that's not fair.
You had a heart attack.
Yeah, I'm sorry you had that health issue.
I think you can vote anymore. Uh, Nathan, I've got one question that hopefully just for clarification for myself, where I know. Parcel zero three two two seven zero zero one is currently some R N. Yeah, question.
Hopefully, it's zero three two two seven zero 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 three.
Three.
Correct.
Two is commercial. Zero zero zero. One is also commercial.
Yeah, I don't have them in front. I'd have to look at the map, but yeah, I mean, everything, everything over here is currently commercial. Oh, well, these two. This is still R two. But yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, Joel, thanks for, Joel, Yellow Horse, thanks for hanging with us. Can I get a legal opinion on the legality? There we go, of my amendment before we entertain it?
Sure thing. Um. It looks pretty good. Maybe instead of saying withstanding, maybe say the or those applicable as a result of application date. That might be a little clearer. If that makes sense.
Thanks. So I asked general consent to a substitute motion to say those applicable as a result of application date. Is that correct, Joel? Can you see it on screen?
Yes, I can. That's correct.
Thank you. Do I have general consent from the council? Appreciate it. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay, I see head nods. Is there any opposition to voting on the amendment? Okay, this is not the vote on the main motion. This is the vote on the amendment offered by me, seconded by Norm. Are there questions on the amendment that are on the board? Okay, those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now we have an amended motion in front of the council. Hopeful vote. We have a motion to call the question. Is there a second? There's a second. You need a majority call the question. Those in favor of voting, please say aye. Are there any opposed? There's three in favor, one opposed to call question. If Joel isn't standing up and walking to the microphone, we will proceed with the vote. He's not. Second was from Garrett. Thank you. Is there a question for the council on the motion? Resolution, please call the roll, Cheryl. When you're ready. Okay. And the really good news is I don't have to vote. So that means I three in favor of the motion as uh, the resolution as as voted as on the board. Motion passes three, one opposed. Thank you very much, council. Thanks for the discussion, Al. Appreciate it. Um. General consent. I hear a general consent for a break until ten minutes after eleven. At which point, if we have a forum, we'll pick this meeting back up. Thanks. No objection. We'll do it. No objection, we'll do it.
So, so like. Sorry, let me just clarify, um.
I know it's hard.
So this, so this is the parcel that's RM.
Yeah.
They're proposing. This. To be RM. It's commercial. So are you saying what it is? For.
I don't.
All of that? Yeah, I mean, without the church stuff.
Yep.
I mean, yeah.
Blank slate. You want it. What's your next?
Yeah, if we, and I could probably just use the assumption that it, this. Is developed at the, or the same rate as this, basically. Right, but I mean, but I mean, like. The net development acreage. Is the same ratio.
Oh, gotcha.
For the remainder. That's probably what I would use. I mean, I, I usually say like eighty percent.
Yeah, that's.
But. I don't really know, seventy, eighty.
That's good. That's.
It's higher, it, it, it's, it's low, it's lower net development acreage if you make them put a road in. But.
Cause roads don't handle development.
Right. And you know, most cities don't do it that way.
Oh, really? I'm not expecting them to, like, I just want to get their buy.
Yeah, so.
Because. Which. No prejudice. Well, and it's just. We're not valued.
Huh?
My job is to. Create value. That doesn't do. It doesn't.
It might sit along, but they usually do it sit.
It sounds like.
I don't think that they will with this one.
Inside of.
I have.
Okay. Like they're ready to.
They. Really?
They have. Other land. All over the place.
Right. Uh.
Council, I see a forum in the room. Uh, most, uh, the media will come back to order, please. And I've lost track. We have next, uh, water ring review workshop. Justin, is that you?
It is.
Thank you. So we have a motion to suspend the rules to leave this item updated. And a second from Mark. That's a debatable motion. Any discussion on that? Okay. Is there opposition to voting motion? Respond to this. Seeing none of those in paper, uh, postpone, please say aye. Hey, Justin. Don't. Don't forget what you were gonna say.
Hours into that. Hours and hours into that.
Council, that and part. Uh, we still have a closed session in front of us, so please be brief. Thank you, Garrett.
I just had a couple, rest me, one. Public hearing. I was gonna ask, yeah. What, what is the best way for us to. Address maybe some of the ticketing story people. And is that only for the sidewalks that didn't get done to make it get that ticket? Something like the driveway, right? Avoid sidewalks.
Correct.
Best way to address that when you are at a town park. Maybe. Surgery, maybe my neighbor, son, made a seater.
Well, you said, did they even see the citation on board?
No, no, that, yeah, they, they received a door hanger and that's. Just a warning, yeah. But. But. But I think, I mean. I, I, I think in general, you know, the ordinance. Doesn't have exceptions. Um, how do you remedy that? I think that's up to the property owner, whether. Whether when they go out of town, they, you know, someone else has to fill in for them and. It's, it's, it still is their responsibility. I think, I think it gets a little sticky if you start coming up with exceptions of. Well, if this happens or if that happens or. I mean, we could do that and when we, and we had. Language like that for parking, for example, on the street of. Well, if it's a doctor call or if it's this. You know. Delivery or, and we ended up taking, we, you know, that, that was actually taken out by the council last year and so. I, 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 I don't know. I don't, I mean, there may be a way to craft that. Uh, but the, you know, the whole purpose of it is so that. It gets cleared in a reasonable timeframe. So that, so that, you know, when. When people are using it. It'll be safe. And they're not going out in the street. Which, you know, it may seem quick, but. I don't, I don't, I don't know how else to do it. It's, it's a tough balance. Yeah, so. That, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we. And, and we have to give a warning if it's on private property. Technically, we don't have to for public. Property, something like this, we could cite them. Um, in the past. It's all just been complaint based. If someone complains, then we've called them and said, oh, you know, we've, there, we've got this issue. We ask you to clear it. Uh. We're a little more proactive this time, um. You know, someone walking down the street that. It slips on the snow or ice. They might not call into the city and complain about it, but it's still a hazard, you know, so.
Can you just remind me, what is the time?
So if the storm ends. And, and he's, and the, the gentleman sided it between, I believe, five PM and six AM. You have to have it cleared by nine AM the next day. So. Let's say the storm is continuing. Like through seven or eight AM, technically. The way it's written, you wouldn't need to, uh, clear it until nine AM the next day. But if this, let's say the storm ends, meaning the snow stopped. Before six AM, you need to have your snow cleared by nine AM. So whether that's reasonable or not. You know, that's up for debate, but, but. I think if, if you get into exceptions, it gets a little bit. Difficult to enforce. Yeah, potentially. Well. But are tho, are those all city? I mean, technically, we're, we're maintaining more sidewalks than we have to by law, by, by, by code. We just. But we do, I mean, if, if, if we're, if we're, I guess if we're not following that for. Ones adjacent to our properties, then. You know, that's something to consider, yeah. Well, yeah, but we do, but we do clear a lot more than just.
Yeah, but now those people on thirty-two and south or one sixty-five, they're not, they're used to us clearing. And so if we're not gonna clear it, it's not gonna get cleared.
Right.
And then we're gonna go hang a door hanger on people's doors that have had the city clean their sidewalk for the last decade. That's a concern, I feel like.
Yeah.
So. I think we shouldn't discuss policy here.
Right.
But I will refer. The council to a recent. Change to our code called code enforcement. Where all this is like, I, I believe we've talked about when we adopted the code, it's one point zero eight point zero four zero. If you. Just go to, you don't have to write it down, just go search for code enforcement on our ordinance. And if that's wrong. Agent. We have given staff the marketing orders. If it's wrong, then we'll change it. Thank you.
The only thing I have, um. Gively Morgan Farm, five hundred and C three. It first you. And it's great, and you were explaining. Uh, just trying to get things set up, true, they understand. Uh, legally, how it should be set up and what to do, to do that, uh, what the best way is to go about managing the number of animals. Who uses it, first, and it's. So it's not gonna be, it's gonna be again next Wednesday. It's just murder. So it's good. And we haven't yet made any. Staff changes to the. But I think right now, good products. At least within the past few weeks.
Excellent. Can I file one here for a second? I'm somehow on the Cash Valley Historical Board, another five elements like you guys are, so. I met at one of those meetings, someone. Who is involved in historic. Preservation throughout the state. And that person sent me a list of. Possible ways to get money to keep the Morgan farm, the Morgan bar up in here.
Oh.
So, please remind me to forward that to you.
Yeah.
To you, to, to both of you, I believe, for the board.
Hey. That's all.
Thank you. Nathan?
I just appreciate being on this council and the process. It's been like, well, like. Every change. Maybe to go with that, uh, this sweet family, man, they're just getting hit with a lot of, uh, health issues and stuff and. She's contemplating there, so just keep her thoughts, just.
I had a conversation with Kay. I'll be happy to share that with you in private. Uh, I'll be really brief. Justin, I said it on, uh. Utah League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee. You'll be happy to know that someone in the legislature wants to sponsor a bill that allows the air recallers. Which will be the only elected official in the state subject to recall.
Were you the one that sponsored it?
Also interesting things, Justin, I'll just hit them real quick. You probably have vote by mail is a question. Transportation utility fees, whether we can charge that. And, uh, I'm actually gonna stop on this one. I went to a UDOT. Sorry, I went to a CMPO meeting on Monday. You heard some of it. Actually, you heard it all. The eighty-nine ninety-one corridor study is complete. The next step is a corridor agreement. I have specifically if. What the process would be to draft that corridor agreement and if Nibley City can be involved in. Uh. Writing that draft instead of being ended a finished document. Um, UDOT said yes. And a consultant will reach out to staff. It's all. Levi.
Uh, just want to mention, we were working with a selection committee right now to narrow down the. Consultant, uh. The selected consultant for the, uh, general plan. So hopefully we have that for you at the next city council meeting if we can get the contract done as well, but. Yeah, Ben. Good. I, I don't know. We had, we got four proposals and so. It's difficult to narrow down, but we're there, we're getting there.
Justin?
The man part of this voting is still being debated if that's gonna be continued at the legislative. I'm just wondering if I could take the temperature of council, considering that this voting at all. Let me know with your thoughts on that. Um. Also, we are not required to comment on the cash county for our election, but. And I am, uh, this would be the first election that I would have. That is all bold, my bad. These letting us stay. Contract, which will, of course, have the council next time to clear that. Um, second thing I need your, the conflict of interest disclosures, uh. They do. They for them to be posted by the state legislature.
Justin, you didn't have anything?
Uh, you're out of gas or you could.
I did remind myself of one.
Go ahead.
I mean, more. Implicating or Nibley, Nibley, passing for curators.
If you thought this meeting was rough, you should have went to the.
I seen it.
Good job.
It's just getting started.
Any, any shovels will run.
We appreciate your service. You guys have anything? Okay. Um, Joel, thank you so much for helping us tonight. Thank you, uh, for being here and now really getting to why you're here. We appreciate your advice all along. Um. I don't know, based on where we are, I'm in the life of council, they're making motion. Joel, sorry, to go to closed session and state the reason for going to closed session or not. Okay, so. Do you have a motion for Sarah?
Close this meeting and go to a closed session.
For what purpose, please?
To discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation and to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease a real property pursuant to Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two five.
Thank you very much. And is there a second on the motion from Norm? Thank you. Any opposition to voting? Seeing none of those in favor of adjourned this meeting and going to closed session for the reasons stated, please say aye, um, or there is a post. All right, let's give Cheryl a chance to change the recording.
And, and Joel, I'm gonna close this and open up the other link I sent you. Okay?
Sounds good.
And hopefully the audio is okay. If not, we're, let's watch something, but.